No kidding.
That's pretty bad. I think it's about... Okay, we have rich seven PM on public order. Please scan for the public legion.
The legion stood by of the United States of America. The United Republic, the British stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the living justice.
Okay, Julie, do we have forums? Um, approval of the agenda. Is there any change in sequence or removal of items?
No.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
Also.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carrying. Um, order of business number five, announcements.
So there, I have several announcements that will be covered during my district administrator's update.
Okay, let's go on to number six then, and celebrations.
So, Mary Ann, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
You are. Okay, well, Friday was a pretty special day in Pittsville. Um, you know, things happen in interesting ways. And, um, you know, this community had a tragedy a number of years ago. And, um, you know, it, it took a very good, skilled, committed teacher to take the, take the feelings that the kids had to, um, you know, translate that into conversations about fire prevention. And what could we do? How could this have been avoided? What could we do so it doesn't happen again? And so through, you know, listening, through guiding, um, you know, the students first brainstormed about who they could talk with about making a change. Uh, brainstormed that. Luckily, Caitlin Potts was in the class and it just so happened that Grandma was the fire chief. So that was a significant break there. Um, but also, under Mrs. Coon's guidance, these kids wrote letters. Um, they talked to people and it took a long time. And they went through school from second grade, third grade, fourth grade, on and on. Bills were introduced. Some of those kids went down to testify. Um, and finally, they graduated. But finally, um, a real important life-saving bill that came about because of the care and compassion of those children who were guided by their teacher were able to bring this to fruition. So, thank you, Lana, for your job and what you do every single day in the classroom. Thank you, Jerry, because you were a driving force behind it and kept at it. And live by the Winston Churchill quote, never, ever, ever give up. Those are my comments.
I couldn't have said it better. We have some photos up from the ceremony on Friday, which as we were talking, for those that weren't here, pretty much made the news wires all over the state. It was on the Journal Sentinel front page and several other news outlets. So wonderful thing.
Yeah. And the really neat thing also was all of our students, K through 12, were able to be there. So, you know, I, I never saw a bill signing until I was like forty years old. These kids had an opportunity to experience something really special. Um, and, you know, with a Pittsfield connection, it wasn't just some generic education bill, but something that was very meaningful to our community and, um, and to our kids.
So Chief, I have to tell you, I had a community member comment to me Friday while I was picking up a fish fry. Um, that, you know, the, the other piece of this is, and I'll be honest with you, I didn't know. They had, when they first heard about a bill on lighters, they're like, seriously, do we not have better things to do than focus on lighters? I didn't realize the extent to how they made these lighters that looked like cars and toys for kids. And that person had read the article, uh, that was up, like, it was talking about, I had no idea. Like, so the educational component is for people in general about, you know, what these are and how they had filtered, you know, into homes.
We got hammered several times over the years by a lot of people that, you know, we get labeled the nanny state legislation, you can't tell parents how to parent. And my argument was two things. One is, we tell parents how to parent every day. You wear your seatbelt, you wear your bicycle helmet, you often, that is not unheard of. And then if they persisted, then I just got kind of direct and said, well, if you've ever drugged a seven-year-old when I have a house fire, then you and I can talk and say, well. So, not to be snotty or otherwise, but, um, that's what we don't want to do.
It's a safety issue, safety issue, public health issue.
We're, we're not the first state to do this. I think the numbers, we're like number eighteen or nineteen right now. But they've all taken a long time. I can thank all of you and Lana especially because I remember when we, well, I remember the day Caitlin jumped in the car and it'd be the weekly reader making the statement that she did home number four. Um, but then I really thought, ah, this is gonna be a cakewalk. This is so easy. And just beat down, beat down, beat down. A couple of years I didn't even come up here because I was embarrassed and we weren't making any headway. But we had some really good players this year and whenever I was up here, I got support. I mean, everywhere. So I even had some members of the fire service that were skeptical. But said, you can't make a change if you don't cry. So.
I think your props were very, very helpful too. They were pretty powerful because I, I noticed that's what a lot of news sources which, and it was for a good reason.
I asked the governor, I said, have you ever seen what we're talking about? He said, no, not really. So when we got out in the lobby, he was like, oh my God.
Right. Is that a collection that you just collected over the years?
Yeah. I, I, what I used to do, I had my grandson's toys and the lighters mixed together. And I would set them on the table. I'd hear it, pick out the lighters. Most of you will be able to do it, but not after spending a lot of time. Now you're five years old, you do it at five. So Julie Lassala and Amy Suber, we were our first legislators and they don't get a hundred percent. And, uh, so we've, we've been on both sides of the aisle. I hated the politics involved, but that's the way things are. And, um, I try not to be real political, but unfortunately it has to be political. Some of my colleagues don't believe that, but, um, you have to be political if you want to make a difference.
And, and there's politics and there's policy.
Yes.
And what both of you worked on with the children and with the legislators was policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. I have to make another meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Did all the kids get a pen?
No. It's a great question. No, but the governor's lady does. But there's a but in this.
That's the benefit of going to a bill signing. You get a pen.
The governor's ladies, I talked to her afterwards and said, would you like us to send you pens for everybody else up there? And I said, absolutely. So they said, give us a number and we're gonna ship you pens for everybody. So it's, everybody gets a pen.
Every student in the district gets, I mean, again, like Mary Ann said, a lot of people, you're in your, well, probably a lot of people have never even been to one, but, I mean, I would have never dreamed of. But when you get that pen, like, people keep that pen. Like, that's a pen from a bill signing. So that's awesome. That's all the students. That's great. Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, anything else on celebrations? Or are we ready to move on to, I think we have more good stuff, right? Um, okay, so Caitin, student representative update.
As always, we've got another short and sweet, hopefully, presentation for the board. As far as our senior trip goes, this is all pending right now. I'm gonna set this going. But right now, we've got Oscar opportunity to attend the Six Flags Grand Theft Auto: Brave America. That's Great America. That's our on-site location. The two dates available are May eleventh and May eighteenth, probably the end of the fourteenth eighteenth if we end up doing this. Right now, Mr. Abner, Mr. Jordan Abner is trying to set things up with him, get this pen cleaned up, and we'll be able to work out. So as far as end-of-the-year activities go, which is coming up very quickly, on the third, we've got birthday, seventeenth. We've got sixteen twelve, we've got a great kickball tournament at ten thirty. On five twenty-two, we've got the senior awards night at seven PM. And on five twenty-four, the student council is planning activities for last hour, the last day of school. We've got games, competitions, maybe smaller ones. And as far as graduation goes, it's May twenty-fifth at ten AM in Ice Soul Gym, as always. You know, you're lucky enough that you've got Mrs. Lee Fillet as our speaker, as our key speaker. So, Mary Ann.
Question? What are some of the plans for birthday?
As far as birthday goes, I can't tell you right now, but I'm sure.
Birthday is planned by the ecology class, which Caitin is designing this year. Uh, but their current plans are, well, we're trying to get our mind around how to be yard clean up without putting, um, like, yard waste into plastic bags. That's been the big hang-up the last few years, like, because the plastic bags are cheap, but then nothing ever depposes. So we're, that's, oh, my other thing we're working on, Mr. Rogers is working on earth-friendly lunch. There's something worse than every year, turning to locally sourced, um, food without plastic packaging for lunch. You'd be surprised how expensive it is if you were to give it a plastic packaging. Um, he's gonna come into the jits. We start off in the auditorium. Eighth grade is included. And the theme is plastics, single-use plastics. Um, so our ecology class is doing presentations on, um, single-use plastic products and how we can away from them and what they do when they break down into microplastics. And then it's yard cleanup. And so Mrs. Florence has, uh, sign up for the community. Anybody who needs help, often elderly folks who are doing big yards or they need things cleaned out. Then our students deploy all over the community and clean up from all morning. Then they grab their lunch, then they go to Northwood County Park and they do earth-friendly games, learn about the planet, enjoy social company, breathe some fresh air. And then I believe the baseball field, we dedicate it to forty-five. And so half are going there, the other half are gonna stay in physical.
Just an idea, but what about reusing the plastic bags? I mean, they came off the dump site. You don't have certain mall available, take it off to the dump site, dump leaves, reuse the bags. I mean, that would be.
Okay.
Or did they get wagons that have four spots?
Yeah, I think she's leaning towards, I'm trying to let the health class with plans, I think she's leaning towards a giant paper bag for it. Uh, but I, she's got the E M P on Monday to come back from Arden Guti. Caitin planned this actually a lot, because, but.
Anything else?
Interrogate.
Okay, um, we're on to number eight, district administrator update.
Slide three. Okay, so state testing season, is what we call it here. Um, ACT testing, I mean, each of the principals kind of, uh, expound upon, um, the testing. One that has, or two that have taken place already and then the forward exam testing started today and all the way through to the nineteenth. So ACT testing took place last month.
Yep. Uh, we're across roads, no wells, nice wet environment. Uh, every single junior showed up on time. Um, the online for the first time worked very well. It was second time, sorry. Um, but it worked very well. We tested the network there, um, back with their evacuation drill. Um, students seemed to like the online versions, easier to type in as they handwrite the writing test. The scores came back in three weeks. We have all pre-ACT scores. Uh, they look pretty good. Uh, pre-ACT was last week. We did it during a snowstorm because Jason Brutus. Um, so we had, um, nearly every student show up out of the freshman sophomores. We don't have those scores back yet. Uh, but it seemed to, seemed to do pretty well. We did it in the building in the regular classes, uh, and that was also online for the first time.
We are not allowed to publicly release the ACT results yet, which is why we can kind of talk through the process and be elaborated on. We were relatively pleased with the results, but as far as the public release, we are not able to do that yet. Okay, forward testing. So that, um, I shared with the board last week, the communication that went out to all the families. Heather can talk about the structure, kind of a change in both procedure, um, kind of shore up some areas as far as the testing environment and whatnot, and then kind of lively spreading it out over the period there.
Um, so this year we had a testing team that really carefully planned the schedule. Nobody else, I mean, we're focusing on, um, smaller groups for certain kids, um, just to help that environment. Um, grades three through eight take the ELA math test and then grades four and eight also have social studies and science. So that's why it's, um, the two-week testing, because we're trying to do like one test a day. So just really trying to look at the environment to help the kids.
And I know specifically having the kids take the test in the classroom during the period when they, so they're taking their ELA test in their ELA classroom during the block when they would normally have the class. There's science behind that. There's been research on that, familiarity with the teacher, so, uh, those components. And then spacing out a little bit, because in the old days, it used to be you hammered, you tried to hammer this out in like two days, a lot of districts did, where you just didn't get test fatigue and stuff. So I think Heather and her team came up with a great plan here as far as the environmental component of the testing and stuff and spread it out. So the first day today went off relatively smoothly.
Yes, I want to recognize the work of Asher Maybell, because she's doing all the test tickets. She depends on, organizes them, a lot of work in time, so.
And the window actually opened earlier. One of the reasons you don't usually want to be one of the first districts to go is because there were all kinds of technology issues around the state before testing last week. So we kind of, you don't want to go too late because you have to do makeups potentially. But if you go right away, you let the other districts work the bugs out of the testing procedure, which, um, there were flags coming out every day about all the, uh, the breakdowns. Smooth sailing back on one here. So good start to the testing. Okay. Uh, Crystal Apple Awards banquet, that is coming up on May first in Marshville. Uh, we have two teachers that were, uh, I believe we announced earlier, were recognized as teachers of distinction. We did not, um, have anybody that made it to the Crystal Apple this year award. But these two will be recognized during the presentation, that they won't speak, but they'll be recognized. So if any board members are interested in attending the banquet, please email Heather. She takes care of regist, uh, registry, uh, reservations for the administrators and board members who wish to attend and any staff members that want to support their colleagues. So please email Heather. What, is there a deadline for registration?
Not necessarily.
By the end of the week would be okay, you think? Please let her know by the end of the week if you'd like to attend the banquet. So update on the facilities and capital improvements committee. So we actually have, um, thirteen persons volunteered to participate on that committee. I was pretty pleased. We sent out an all-family email. Um, I got a nice response to that. So the group includes parents, community members, coaches, uh, teaching staff, administrators, and board members. So we have a pretty diverse group. Uh, what our plan is for this first meeting, and Deb actually sent out the, did we use survey marker? What did we use to?
I used, um, doodles.
Doodle to kind of coordinate, when you have this many people trying to coordinate a date. So she sent out a doodle to all the folks who volunteered to be on the committee. We're gonna get a date before the end of April. Then our plan is, we have the district, um, five and ten-year, uh, improvements plan that, uh, it pretty much covers. Pam, can you talk just a little bit about what that plan encompasses, that, the improvements plan?
So the original ten-year plan, uh, we don't have a slide specifically. We can break it down, but the initial ten-year plan would be the Fund Forty-Six plan that was approved multiple years ago. So in this process now of this committee, we'll update that as well. We're moving, like, projects we've already done, modifying the costs and stuff since, you know, the inflation's been going up skyrocketing. So, um, that's, you know, it's basically a ten-year plan and will eventually need to be approved by EPI.
Yeah, I believe it was originally two thousand sixteen. I think it was the plan.
Sixteen seventeen, two-year, yes.
So Pam actually did some work updating last year already to the plan to bring some of the stuff that's already been updated on there. But that committee will redo that plan and kind of try to come up with a, uh, plan for how we may tackle some projects, through Fund Forty-Six and other methods and stuff. So we're excited to get this going. Uh, took a little bit of time, but, uh, there were a lot of irons in the fire this year. And we didn't want to forget about this and get this together. So first meeting, and we're anticipating this would be like a quarterly meeting. So every three months, uh, during the course of the school year, not a monthly meeting or anything. Any questions for the board on that? I did have two board members that volunteered, uh, to be a part of the committee.
It's possible. It's next week.
Is that what it is? Next Monday? Oh, that's, yeah. So we'll, hopefully we'll get, uh, all the returns back on the doodle and we'll make a set a date here early this week so we can actually get as many people here as possible. Okay, uh, I guess this looks like it's self-promotion, but it's really not. Like, it was awkward putting my name in there, but I took it right from the library. So Tammy Harding, uh, reached out about three weeks ago and she said, hey, we're gonna do this thing called Community Connection, where we're gonna invite people to come in, uh, and meet the community and answer questions. And I'd like you to be the first person. And I was like, yeah, absolutely, I'd like to do it. So that is tomorrow at one PM. I'm gonna be at the public library with Tammy. Uh, no script. It's just gonna be more or less talk about the school district, what's going on, and then take, take any questions that are thrown at me. So I'm gonna practice tonight. I'm gonna have Emily Pepperdine with questions, awkward questions, such as, some prepared for everything. So should be a good time. I'm, I'm, uh, expect, I've heard from several people who said they plan out of attendance, so hopefully we get some people there.
I wrote it on my calendar soon.
Nice to hear. I think it's a great thing, Tammy's coming up with script. We did, you know, we've talked about the community library being like a social hub for a small town, just like the school district. Um, I think this is a neat opportunity here, so I'm looking forward to it. Okay, that is all I have.
Okay. Our next agenda item is to, um, look at the, um, approve the consent agenda items. I do however want to pull two items, um, actually one item from that. First of all, um, the meeting minutes, um, the, the regular meeting minutes of March eleventh. Um, we have a couple corrections. And so what I would like to do is pull those minutes out of the consent agenda item and, um, get separate motions from members of the board. Let's see, it's in red.
So I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of March eleventh, twenty twenty-four with the corrections to, um, the motion that was made by myself and seconded by Rick to approve ten student applications received for a total of twelve start college now classes for the fall semester twenty twenty-four. And a motion made by myself, seconded by Rick, to approve the two student applications received for a total of three early college credit classes for the fall semester of twenty twenty-four. So I make a motion to approve that change.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, um, I think the next thing we have to do is a separate vote.
Mary Ann, you have to confirm that you're all in favor.
Oh, yeah, that's right. And, you know, I was getting to that. We have to approve that everyone's in favor of the correct motion. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carrying. That will go to the rest of the consent agenda, which includes, um, A, meeting notice certification, C, financial status, D, retirements and resignations, E, hirings. And, um, that's it. So I would entertain a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items as presented.
And one question? Yes, so the only question that I have is the one hire that the candidate has to pursue an experience-based licensure in order to qualify for the role. Is there, like, is, is that just procedural? Like, is there, it seem, it, it, the way it's written in here, it feels like it may or may not happen, so.
No, it's, Dr. Watson, if you want to talk to, this is through EPI, it's a verified pathway.
What, I don't have any question though, but.
So I just wanted to make sure that that isn't like, it just says will be pursuing, which made me think, does that mean they'll get it or don't get it? But it seems like they have to get it in order to be in the position. So I just wanted to make sure before we approved hiring the person, but that's for sure.
It's for sure that he's pursuing. That's the best way to put it. Like, he has to accomplish all these things that we put out before him or if we qualify to even do that, right, as you forgot. What's nice though is that we didn't decide what those hours look like and we laid out a path that makes sense that he's all in favor of. Um, and he lives with a very good future, so that's helpful.
Dr. Watson put out a very, in conjunction with Ethan, a very detailed, um, more or less pathway to this licensure. So, and as Dr. Watson said, we don't, we don't know. It's there and it's attainable, but certainly.
Sure, and in the meantime, it's a temporary license?
It's a provisional.
Can, can you do the job well for soon yet?
That's my question.
Oh, this is due before he steps foot. This is, he's doing this before August.
He's gonna have all the hours completed, everything that is mapped out to have it done before we start school.
And it's not that, it's formidable. It is some reading, it's some classroom visits, it's some, um, reflections on assessment and curriculum design. It's all done with Stevens Online and Johnson. And then, once he starts here, the new teacher program takes over helping with that.
So I, I think my question is, should this be approved with the condition that he does this? Or like, like, I, I don't have any, I, I'm excited he's joining us. I just want to make sure that we like, put it in the right way, right? Because if he didn't approve this and then we just approved him to start, like, he has a contract that we're appro, like, we're approving, but.
But the contract would be already, without you guys making that adjustment, would be contingent on him being able to complete the job. And without completing that program, he wouldn't be able to. So the answer to your question, you guys don't need to make a separate motion. It just wouldn't, the contract would be null and void if he didn't attain that by September.
Okay.
Because he wouldn't be licensed to do it.
So has he signed a contract or, okay, and then that contingency is listed in it? Got it.
You have to be a licensed, he has to be a licensed educator to fulfill that, so.
Okay, good question. Thank you, Julie. Yeah, so I don't have an issue with that. I just wanted to make sure that.
Use urban's awareness, the contract states this agreement is conditioned upon teacher possession of state of Wisconsin teacher's license. I mean, wouldn't they happen if you did this?
I, I believe that's actually in all of our, that language is in all of our contracts, but yeah, that'll cover us in the event something where they have to put that.
Thanks for answering my question.
Yep.
Uh, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, can I ask one other question?
You should.
I'm really sorry. My other question is, yeah, the hiring of that position then means we don't need the other auto program, right? Like, he's, he's taking over the whole auto program, right?
That was awkward.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't even know who's here.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry.
Dr. Watson, can you carry the child?
I'm sorry. I'm coming out.
It's the next item.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, Alan, you didn't know, huh?
Should be replaced.
You'll see why.
Okay, okay.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Okay, is there a second? To approve the consent agenda items? This is a little risky motion.
A second.
Okay, thanks, Chris. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items as presented. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carrying. Moving on to item number ten, information-only items. A, beginning auto program. Mr. Hughes.
Is there anybody known as Mr. Hughes?
No, I don't. I don't just suck my foot.
Nice to meet you. Apparently I used to be an auto teacher or something.
Wait, you aren't telling us today, Alan? Don't go anywhere.
I'll, I'll let Dr. Watson take the introductory slide. Uh, so he knows a little bit of background.
I asked Alan to come in and he works, uh, on their, uh, mastercard today, so I'll go keep it too long. But just, I wanted to share what he, lessons learned from the auto's class that he's been teaching. We have had autos here as far as we know, a very long time ago, so. Uh, the background here is that we did include a bay for mechanical classes in CP Wing Build. A couple of years ago, we're doing a class offer there as agricultural mechanics, which is small engines basically. And that only ran for nine weeks of the year. Uh, so other than that, that bay sat empty. Meanwhile, student interest surveys, partnership local businesses, and tech colleges revealed a need for more automotive education. Also just common sense, we always need to work on engines. Also just common sense, we always need to work on engines. Students like to work on engines, uh, but there weren't any here to work on. Through a combination of grant and school funding, we piloted one course. I think we were pilots and working there in National Guard. Uh, before beginning on Lotus for the second term this year. Uh, but what I mean really though by pilot is that there's no curriculum established for it. There's no resources, there's nothing but an empty room. Uh, we brought in Mr. Hughes, his background in aircraft maintenance and agriculture made him uniquely qualified for the job. We did some schedule changes. It wasn't in the master schedule. If you remember, you approved this, uh, course, uh, back at the beginning. This was here to add into the master schedule and so that we had to go to students and say who's interested in this. That's a real challenging thing because even if you're interested, it means you can. You might have to have a class at that spot that you need to graduate or you need to improve your best. So was it time to bring it up with?
Uh, twelve.
Twelve, okay. Uh, we ran the course from December to March and now we're at the point where we can reflect with the lessons learned. So I'll let Mr. Hughes say it.
Right. I brought a couple props too. So the, I, I did have a little bit of experience teaching before I came in. Um, just enough so that I had some clue as to how much I didn't know about teaching. Um, but I figured, uh, nothing else going on during the winter between dairy farm and I didn't have any orders with the Air National Guard at the time. So I figured once I had this, I was fun, so. Um, and it did turn out I did have fun, so. Um, we had no, uh, pre-established lab materials or, um, anything like that. So I brought in, for the most part, I brought in stuff that I had around home and that's what we worked on. So I had a pair of, I scrounged up a pair of John Deere diesel engines. Uh, we, so the kids got to take them, tear them down completely and see what everything looked like. Here are the, uh, injection pumps. Um, I also brought in my grandfather's 1949 Chevy pickup. Um, that one was on the road, uh, but it had a lot of issues that, um, uh, meant that I never strayed too far from home with it. Uh, one being wiring. Uh, we had two kids that worked very diligently throughout the entire quarter, uh, rewiring that thing from front to back. Uh, we were also working on, uh, putting new kickpins in it to make it look safer on the road. Um, so that project's just about done. I got a few odds and ends I can line up on my own. Um, we also, um, a few kids had never used a torch before, so, uh, we had some rusted bolts on one of those engines. So they learned how to use the torch to heat a bolt so that, uh, get it loose. So, um, here's another shot. We also did quite a bit of work on my own personal vehicle. Uh, we did actually do a timing chain on that. So we got, uh, pretty, uh, this is pretty invasive, I mean, inside of that. Um, uh, went pretty good. Um, another shot, we, we always had, um, a wide variety of different projects going at any one time. Um, this individual had quite a bit of, uh, experience, uh, machining. Uh, so I put him to work, uh, mickey and crank, um, checking the specs, see, um, how it is as far as where. Uh, this individual had a dash out of a, uh, 1980s Corvette, uh, that was giving, had some electrical issues. So we dug into that. Uh, we learned that early 80s Corvettes are known to have lots of electrical issues and it could be a lot of different things. Um, one individual, uh, did have a tractor at home that wasn't running, uh, real well. Um, we brought it in. That was a great project because it turned out to be something pretty basic. So we got to talk about some of the basic troubleshooting steps we didn't have to get into in depth. It was a good learning experience for them. Um, a couple of other things we worked with, um, I was able, Ms. Meiser inherited an older scan tool. So we did work on some little bit more modern stuff, pulling codes off cars, uh, figuring out what the issue was, uh, whether it's sensors or what the case may be. Um, so that's a little more modern stuff. On the other end of the spectrum, this is a vacuum motor that runs the windshield wipers on that 49 Chevy pickup. Um, windshield wipers did not work good, uh, so we took that apart, rebuilt it. So that's ready to go back in. So we got modern vintage and then we got a little custom work. Um, we did have two different, uh, community members come in as, um, guest speakers. Um, one individual does have a custom, uh, classic car restoration business and he brought in an English wheel and a beauty roller. Um, this doesn't look that impressive, but this was a flat square piece of metal when he started. And to get these compound curves in it with an English wheel is as much art as it is a science because you're shrinking metal around here to bring, to get that compound curve into it. So the kids got to play with some of this tooling. Um, so they got to experience a little bit of what a custom classic, um, career would be, whether you're in a restoration shop or hot rod shop. So I, you know, they aren't experts on any one thing, but I tried to expose them to a lot of different things that are out there. Um, next slide, uh, lesson learned. Um, in a beginner's class, it was pretty difficult for me to have three different style projects going at once. Um, you know, if in a more advanced class where I could give a kid a scanning tool and say, go pull codes, uh, give this to another kid and say, rebuild this and get, go to another kid and say, hey, uh, make me a fender. It would, it would have worked. Um, it's a little more difficult in beginners class because they need coaching and mentoring at every step. So I'm trying to coach and mentor here and these kids don't have much to do. And that, that, that's when Dr. Watson gets, gets called, it's this, it's called, called into the equation. But overall, um, I had fun. Um, I think the kids, um, um, most of them learned a lot and they understood, most of them were very patient with me when, when they had a question about I was helping another kid. Um, that most of them were very patient and, and we were able to work. So, but that was the lesson, um, for a beginner's class in the future. Um, I would definitely have, uh, pre-established labs, you know, where it, you know, it might take, okay, you got 12 kids. It might take 12 carburetors that are all the same that I could set up a whiteboard and say, okay, step one, step two, step three. Um, obviously I don't have 12 carburetors sitting at home, so, so I wasn't able to do that. But in the future, that would be my advice to, to the next person, um, a beginner's class, trying to have pre-existing labs. Um, there was very high level enthusiasm, um, in, in that middle class form. Um, I had a parent come to me and say that, um, and I, I thought maybe he was exaggerating, but he said, my kid looks forward to school now. Um, that's all he talks about. So, um, I, I'm glad that I could fill that role for them. And, uh, and I told this kid, uh, all these kids, I did do a, a debrief with each kid individually at the end of the class. And some of these kids have some tremendous potential, um, whether it's customer, you know, custom work or, uh, the, the straight mechanical work, whatever it may be. So, um, I had two community members come in as guest speakers, as I mentioned. Um, the kids behaved wonderfully when these community members were here. Um, um, so much so that the, the community members noticed this and commented to me after the fact, um, how well they were behaved. I actually sent the email home to all the parents, um, uh, complimenting the parents too, um, on their social behavior. Um, last lesson, um, any, uh, investment in tool accountability to help keep track of tools is going to pay for itself. Um, there's lots of different systems. It's personal preference, whatever the next, next instructor wants to do. But anything to make keeping track of those tools easier, um, is going to pay for itself. Whether you have sheets of foam in the bombing toolbox drawers with cutouts for each individual tool or shadow boards, I, I visited with Troy Collum up at Marshfield School District. Uh, they got some really neat, a really neat system up there that they use for tool accountability. So what, whatever you do, um, um, for tool accountability, that's going to pay for itself. I don't think you have to go to the Snap-on where you have an automated tag on each tool, but, um, I think that's the Snap-on making money. But, um, next steps, um, in bold letters, definitely tech data. Uh, these repair shops, a lot of times have a subscription service for, um, where they get updated tech data on the vehicles that they're working on. Um, and in today's day and age, that's imperative. Um, for the vehicles I was working on, um, I have paper manuals. Um, but any, any repair shop, whether it's an independent like Lance Martin or a Ford dealership, um, they've got their subscription service for all the technical data and that's imperative. Uh, as Lance Martin told the kids when he was here talking, um, if you don't have tech data, about all you can do nowadays is change brakes and it's fast getting to the point where you can't even do that. So the school, that's going to be very important to invest in some sort of subscription service. And there's some that are out there that are pretty economical, uh, but you, you're going to need something if you're going to be working on cars. And that's one thing I harped on the kids for the whole class is that they have to use this stuff. Um, tool accountability system would be another step, as I mentioned. Once you have the tool accountability system, then I say more tools. Um, we, we did the best we could. We did buy some tools. I bought a lot of my tools at home. Um, and then lab materials so that you can have predetermined labs or everyone's doing a grade caliper, everyone's doing a carburetor, everyone's doing that, you know, working with a multimeter on electrical diagnosis, uh, whatever the case may be. After that, then, you know, whatever, uh, if you, you know, a lift would be nice. Um, an updated scan tool, um, you'll probably need at some point in time. This was one that Ms. Meiser inherited from somewhere, I think it actually says mid-state on somewhere. Yeah, it does.
Go sit on a TV.
Uh, Ms. Meiser inherited this summer. Uh, I think it was last updated in 2013. So any vehicles built to last 10 years, it, it doesn't even have the software to, to scan. But so that would be, uh, a future need at some point in time, so. Um, then, you know, there's always going to be more, more shop tools as, as we need. So, um, and I think, so these are, I guess, right now, this is what you're looking at for next year with a new teacher. Um, I guess one, one comment to that. Um, while I was teaching that class, uh, Dr. Watson and Mr. Headfield did put their best, you've started salesmen, but it's on me to try and get me to, uh, come back in a full-time position. Unfortunately for them, I also got a job offer from the Wisconsin Air National Guard at the same time. Um, and so I waited and waited, I decided, uh, to take the offer with the Air National Guard at the bombing range on Babcock. So, so that's what I, that, that's the route I chose. Um, not that I wasn't having fun, not that I didn't enjoy this, but, um, I have fun down there and enjoy that also. So I, I guess go for a plane ride and a refuel on Wednesdays. So, so the school came out for me with that. So that was on the side, right?
Alan, can you go to that slide real quick? Yeah, so for the boards, uh, so we really did one of those one time this year. We're going to do six classes next year with a, a brand new teacher. Um, and so this, these lessons learned magnified, amplified by so many times what we're up against next year. Uh, we don't have Alan's farm to mine for all this equipment next year, uh, maybe, but, uh, whatever. But yeah, so this is what we are up against this year. But I think, I, I, it sounds to me like Alan would make the case for why this is necessary for our students. It's just a big job, right? So all this stuff's got to get resourced and, and prepared.
So I would like to, I'm going to jump in on that as well. Thank you, by the way. Can't thank you enough for this because you, you were fine. No pun intended, you were building a plane while you're flying.
Yeah, right. I, I had fun with it. So it was, it was very took time. I didn't have a lot going on, so I got to come in and tell stories and, and try and help out.
Well, this, this was about my kind of commitment to our students, like, because these are the classes students want to take right now. And I want, I'd like Stephen to jump in on this too. But like, can I take you a bit of a leap of faith here is that, you know, we talked about the equipment. That's a need. We know that. And I have been in conversations with some local businesses that have a vested interest in these classes as well. And the idea is this, it's theory up until you actually have a person doing it. So when you're talking to these businesses about, hey, we'd like to do this. Well, our kids needed this and wanted this. So the commitment to the teaching staff is now when I'm having these conversations with these businesses, it isn't, hey, we'd like to do this. It's folks, we're doing this. This is what we've already done with limited to no resources. This is what we want to do. We're, now we have a logistics setup, which makes it more palpable for them to be like, hey, we have equipment. And I know you mentioned Troy at Marshfield is that, you know, talking about tool sharing programs. So it's going to be now the work starts to try to find these resources, but without that commitment and having that stat, I, I, these conversations are only in theory moving forward, but Stephen?
Yeah, I mean, when I started here 13 years ago, it was, you know, same stuff that was here, same year, what this was here. And 13 years, we got, you know, we managed to figure out how to come up with some of the most state-of-the-art equipment, especially for a school around. So we can't expect that these things will just happen overnight. I mean, those things to grant writing, bill referendums dollars, partnerships with employers. And, and those are things that, you know, we will, I will, will help even in the next year to continue to pursue, uh, particularly in those areas and, and business partnerships. So, um, it will probably be, um, you know, the first year will not be as good as the second year and we'll just hope to continue to be better, which is the same thing we're doing in our, you know, our tech classes right now. Um, it's just, you know, it, it is an investment and, um, it's a big deal. So we've been working on this for a long, a long time, longer than, you know, how we're doing it, you know, so.
The, the most, by the way, social media this year, I got my social media report.
Yes.
One of the most liked posts this school year.
It's gotta be little kids. It's always little kids.
You think so? It was the post about the new autos class that was being offered. They shared with us that, that had the most likes and cheers of any post this year about anything that we've had on our social media.
Also, is the, is some of the needs that we have for these buses a part of the capital conversation that we're having?
Those would be more facilities related, like the lift would be one, like, like a lot of what we're talking about here would be like consumables or, or those types of things.
What's, is anything over $5,000 is a capital or do they have a different, for a, yeah?
Julie, it could be. That would be the committee could decide that, like, if we were talking about a lift. Now, I would say this, that, and Stephen, feel free to jump in. I know there, there's been some conversations that we'd like to share about some businesses would even be willing to, businesses upgrade their equipment when there's still effectively nothing wrong with it, that there would be the potential for us getting equipment at little to no cost, even like the lift or those types of.
I just think, I just think that we have an amazing opportunity with a, a pretty committed group of diverse people that have said they want to be on capitals and facility. And I know we aren't able to do everything, but like, that's a good group to see what those needs are, to like really make this happen because if you gain that energy and excitement kind of throughout the whole community, it will perpetuate. And my guess is the number of things you have up there, it just doesn't take much to spend $5,000 for it to become a capital project. I mean.
Mr. Headfield is on that committee, so I think he will.
Fantastic. Great. It's just my suggestion to get that in front of people in that group because, again, that's where you're going. I mean, and it might not even be that we have to buy, but it might be that you're running into the right person that has it, but.
Yeah, well, so I think the biggest thing is that we're going to work with Ethan to determine what, you know, is there like the district tunnel, but there's also the, a level of like, maybe, you know, what, like Alan mentioned this, right? Like there's lots of ways that one can organize tools and do all these things. And so the biggest thing is we can probably the body from him and what, you know, what he sees that future to look like. Um, and he's working in industry right now, so he's very current in, in this one engine. So that's kind of, I would say where we're at with it right now. But we're going to actively do as much as we possibly can between now, um, that once it's approved and obviously the beginning of this school year. So that's a call.
And we'll keep the board updated as we move through the process because I know it's exciting.
Well, a lot of potential for partnerships with employers.
What is power and energy? Which, what class it's going to be in there?
Well, so, uh, that used, you, you used to actually offer that class here when I first started. It was called Power, Energy and Transportation. Um, and it's like the pneumatics, hydraulics, kind of that, uh, those types of things. Um, so a lot of schools offer that. It's usually a beginner level type of class. It's, yeah, it's a lot. We, we, he's, you know, he's, unlike in small schools, when a lot of CP's teachers started, we were solo. So that's the great thing that he can have right now is he's not going to be a solo. He's going to have myself to help him and I already have all of these connections for him. So it's going to be. And I already have all of these connections for him. So it's gonna matter a lot. But yeah, as much as, you know, we go, uh, we go, you know, basically just, uh, here's the, the course title and, uh, you know, what the course is gonna be about and, um, he's gonna have a workout for him. So.
Dr. Watson? Is there anything else that you'd like to?
Oh, no, no. Um, just, just a closing comment. So you stole a little bit of my thunderous last slide here, but I'll read you the slides. No, no. Um, I have a high degree of optimism about this class, about this program, um, going forward. And there seemed to be a lot of enthusiasm and I think there's, um, a big need to fill. Couple of things about this business. Um, vehicle repair is something that is probably never gonna get outsourced over the seas. Broken vehicles like here in Pittsville, hopefully we never have to ship them to India to get a break job done. So that's a job that should always be here in Pittsville. Even as AI takes over, um, uh, and, and they will, even, even in our equipment, the AI breaks, it can't fix itself. So you're still gonna need a mechanic to come fix the machine. So that's, it's, uh, being a mechanic, if you could, something I learned, uh, I operated my own shop for a while. My brother, uh, operates a shop on his own. If you're a good mechanic, you will always be busy. I've never heard a good mechanic say, oh gee, I have nothing to do about it. That does not happen. So, um, so there's always gonna be a job that's available. Let's, the kids that are gonna fall into that niche, let's help them get into it. Last thing, um, Bryce signed up and it's a wish list for Autos one and two next year, uh, because we know they're gonna be made classes. So hopefully it moves forward. So, uh, with that, I think,
Good question.
Uh, that's everything. I had to do, what, what questions did you have? Any questions?
Okay, um, just a follow-up on all the classes that are listed. Will any of these be able to be offered for credit from Midstate?
No, we're in the shell of it. Um, so we're, we're gonna go to defense some later. Right now, we don't even have tools, right? So we're gonna do coordination with Midstate on yoga classes as soon as we can.
Okay.
Uh, but we're, it's just one thing we're not willing to.
One step at a time. Okay.
Good question.
And, and that was probably one thing that made it more fun for me is I could do whatever I wanted. I didn't have to answer the Midstate, Midstate testing or anything like that. I had more freedom than any teacher in the school, I think. I was.
So we don't get to keep Alan. Um, he's, uh, clearly you can already tell he's a very good NCO for the Air National Guard. And so we got to borrow it a little bit. It's a big task, kid, bringing a lot of his own stuff. We can even damage one of those cars, but great.
Well, then you fixed it.
But yeah, you can't, people go to school for years, get a teaching certificate to hopefully have the skills here to possess this. Uh, the ability to connect with young people and to meet them where they're at. Um, and do the work he did, I wish we could keep him. We can't, but we can be able to hand the product work. Um, so Alan, read this to you and I'll give you an award for the work you did here. So, all right, here we go. Alan took on the role of beginning, uh, teaching a beginning automotive class at VHS. He designed the course, acquired materials, dedicated his time and energy to piloting the program, which greatly benefited the students. Say what the word piloting. Despite not being a trained teacher, he demonstrated great skill in designing instruction and remarkable ability to connect with students. I wish you guys could have seen that. It was remarkable. Um, although we don't get to keep Alan on our team, we're very proud of his effort and work he did with this class. We use the lessons learned to expand the program next year. Mr. Hughes has some work where he's great credit on himself, Air National Guard in Pittsburgh.
Stay, stay. I do salute, right? Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, any other questions for me or?
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
No, there's no problem at all. So.
Thank you. Watch your poster picture with that. All right. Bryce, hang that up when you get home, okay?
Thank you, Susan. All right, I'll, I'll get out of your way. I took up too much of your time already. So I'll do it all.
But this was great. Thank you again so much for being a member.
No, no problem at all. So we've got three coming through the school. So you'll, you'll, I'm sure you'll hear more of us. So, we're probably gonna head out then if there's, it's a school night.
Yeah.
So.
Your honor, please.
Thank you very much.
Um, still under item ten, information-only items. Um, item B is the facilities in capital improvement.
Yeah, I could have. I'm a little embarrassed under, um, sequence is that I forgot I had included that in my district administrator update. So we could have included that. So if you'd like me to repeat everything I said during my district administrator update.
Say that we're gonna.
We covered it.
We're gonna start.
As I said, we're gonna get that eighty-seven for the end of the month.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to item eleven, discussion action items. First of all, um, Project Search. In agreement with the Marshfield School District or the coming school year.
Can anybody want to elaborate? It, it allows us, Dr. Watson, how often have we taken advantage of?
Every few years we do have someone that will go.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, initially we know, cause we asked for.
Here for a line up. We got one coming up, uh, then this year. It's pretty important to us.
If we don't have programs, well, do you, I mean, without getting into specifics.
I'm not an expert in this. I'm sorry. The, the last one we had was right before I started.
So I actually, yes, so I actually also want to just recuse, recuse myself from voting on this. Because if this individual's approved, the agency I oversee actually gets funding for them for, to be a part of that. So I want to make sure that I, but I can answer any questions anyone has about Project Search if that's, if anyone has any questions. It's a amazing, um, final semester typically of, um, a student's, um, high school career that gives them the opportunity to, um, have hands-on internships, um, in, uh, business. So they, they have their educational experience and, um, hands-on job experience. And the one in Marshfield happens to be at the Marshfield Clinic. And I will tell you, last year at the, um, Project Search, um, conference, which actually was in Wisconsin, in Milwaukee last summer, the Marshfield team actually had a hundred percent placement of individuals and jobs, um, coming out of Project Search. So the whole goal is to give that internship experience and individuals get to try out a number of different jobs. Um, students with disabilities and then the goal is that either by the time they finish that, um, year of school or within the next four months after school, that they're successfully employed in the community or successfully transitioned to ongoing further education. So that's kind of the, in a nutshell, about Project Search.
Any questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Any questions?
I'm just breaking this down here. So it's approximately ten thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars per student. Cracker, this is all, we have nine, right?
We have one.
One, we have one.
So it's a student that will be a student count in Pittsville. Yeah, Pittsville does a sixty-six oh three agreement with the school district of Marshfield and pays the school district of Marshfield for her student edu, for the student education component of it. And that's the total of what Marshfield's charging, Pittsville.
So the ninety-seven thousand is?
It's the total for the teacher divided by the number of students.
Even in our share would be the percentage. Of course, transportation work, please. That's for private, it says. Yeah, I think it's a loose. I also can't answer that on the transportation. Can you go on with transportation piece of the.
We've done it. Um, a lot of this class though is, well, all of these classes go through fund twenty-seven, but some of it is grant funded as well. Um, so the transportation, we've had the parent of the student transport them. And sometimes they ask for reimbursement, sometimes they don't. If it's on our bus route to get them to a location, we'll also bus the student. So there's different ways for the transportation.
And I think the last student that Pittsville had, if I'm correct, you, I think you had attracted a Gabians to take that student.
Yes, yes.
So it can be a variety.
That was a unreasonable option.
So how many actual classes are there then prior to them seating these, uh, the job offerings?
It's a combination. So the day consists of instruction and internship rotations. So, and the teacher from the Marshfield School District, her name is Ann Dick. And she's been, she actually has been doing Project Search at Marshfield since its inception fourteen years ago, I think. So she does, like, there's instruction every day and rotations. And I think at the Marshfield Clinic, there's like, I don't know, thirty-two different rotations the kids can be a part of. And then if they aren't interested in health-related areas, um, they can also do an externship. So there have been students who have gone and done like one at the Brew Pub as an example, cause they wanted to get into, um, more food type-related.
So this goes like the whole year?
Oh, it's the full school year, yes.
So Project Search is a full school.
It's their full last year.
Last year. The key, you're right.
They are not here at all. It is, they are one hundred percent off-site at the Project Search program.
Yeah. Um, Julie, are these, are these kids traditional seniors or are they, is it the most senior?
Yeah, so it can be any time between their eighteenth and twentieth birthday as a part of their IEP. Um, so some students are eighteen because this is the last, like, the last year of their IEP and then they're gonna get a job. Other students might stay in school through twenty, um, in more of the traditional classroom. And then that last year of twenty to twenty-one, um, they all do Project Search. So it's a wide variety between eighteen and twenty-one. And actually, if the class isn't full, even adults can join Project Search who have graduated. I will tell you that Marshfield never has room for adults because it's a pretty popular. It, it, we actually oversee the employment piece of it, not the teacher piece of it, that what you're contracting with is Marshfield School District. But ODC provides all of the job placement and support for everybody. Actually, it has four sites in central Wisconsin.
And what they would do is Marshfield will allow seats depending on what is available outside of their schools to districts like ours that don't have the program.
Yeah. So Auburndale, Pittsville, Stratford, Spencer, Edgar, I think they've all sent students to participate.
So they're offering us one seat for next year.
Well, we probably asked for one seat. I, I would guess we only had one student.
We had one student. If we had two students, we would ask for two students, whatever seats. But it would be, to be clear, Marshfield would serve as their students first and then the rest of us. It would be whatever students were available for the other.
You also saw the communities in ours, that this was the outside of Marshfield.
Oh, no, there's others.
Right, so if, if the community using this that are, are the same, or they just have the past of them?
They have the past of them. I couldn't tell you exactly.
None of the dining is ours.
Right. Right. I can guarantee the other eight are not Marshfield. Right. It's a combo of, um, of a variety of districts.
So it's a lot of districts paying costs.
Correct. And, and my, my understanding of the program is that these are students with different types of disabilities.
Correct.
They, right. Um, so they may need my, my, also my understanding incorrectly, if I'm wrong, Julie, but when they have the classroom stuff, it's a lot of daily living skills so they can live independently.
Functional skills.
Yeah, yeah, functional skills. And, um, and it really helps to transition these young adults into adulthood that, yeah.
And we, we do.
Well, I will tell you that the last Pittsville student that went through this two years ago is working thirty hours a week in the, um, in the food dining hall food center for the Marshfield Clinic. So, and that's two years post, um, being a part of Project Search. So that's your last success story and she's doing fantastic.
I'll make a motion to approve sixty-six point oh three agreement with Marshfield School District Project Search for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to, to approve the sixty-six point oh three agreement with the Marshfield School District for Project Search for the coming school year. Any other questions or discussion? Then, on favor, say aye.
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 No? Abstention? Thank you. Motion carried. Item B, summer school courses and teachers.
So, um, right when we get back from winter break, we actually started planning for summer school. So, um, in the last four months, Mary Lou has done a phenomenal job of, um, organizing all of this. Um, tomorrow, the registration will open. Everything is online now. Um, we have four weeks of summer school this, this June. And then, um, we have about twenty-four teachers teaching, um, this, the first session, which is the first two weeks. They have about forty-five classes offered. And then second session is thirty-two classes. And this year, we're doing one-hour classes, two-hour classes, or four-hour classes. So it's gonna be up to you to choose. And as always, we have, you know, classes with games, classes that have, um, outdoor activities. Really depends on the student's interest. So just a variety of classes. And then, um, we do have, I believe we're doing two weeks of dance. So that was, um, brought back by the Beckers last year. So, um, she wants to do two weeks of that. And then we will also do Jump Start Again with Mr. Klein and Mrs. Brericks. And then, um, they are offering Hunter Safety and Mrs. Books's last year doing Hunter Safety. So Mr. Kuhn is going to take over that program. So a lot of opportunities. And then we do, we have the free breakfast and the free lunch.
I have a question about the free breakfast and the free lunch. How, how is that paid for?
That is a Mr. Andre's question.
It's, uh, we can use either the summer seamless option or the, um, the summer school something option. I can't remember what the, the acronyms are, but, um, we always, we always pick the, the one that gives us the best.
Best reimbursement.
And reimbursement, yes.
Okay. Um, another food security question. Um, does the NOW program through Marshfield Air United Way, does that operate during summer school? Um, is we do have, having on that transport stuff, cause we have a teacher that brings it from Marshfield.
It is, it's a, it's getting worked on. We're, we're.
Yes. Okay, okay, good. Because I know we have quite a number of.
We're guaranteed, but it's getting, it's getting worked on.
Okay. The free breakfast and lunches offered to all students under age eighteen in the community, they do not have to be signed up for summer school.
I'm not sure. Were you gonna go more into the slideshow or just?
No, that, that just hit the big picture.
Cause I did have a question about, I, I'm, I'm curious, I'm, I, a lot of these courses were offered last year. I remember a lot of them looked the same. The one that kind of sticks out to me is this Dungeons and Dragons. Kind of curious on who came up with that idea and what the reason behind that was and why would that be.
Um, so it's currently a club after school as well. Um, Mr. LaCridge runs it. Um, and it's just, it's, uh, I think a lot of games and board games.
Well, the reason, only reason I ask is because in, kind of looking into the Dungeons and Dragons thing, there's a lot of controversy over it. I mean, I'm not a big fan of Wikipedia, but this really breaks things down real fast. I mean, it, it, it's got, it's a role-playing game, um, subject of numerous controversies, allegedly promoting Satanism, witchcraft, suicide, pornography, and murder. Dungeons and Dragons has been accused of portraying Caucasians, Asians, and Africans in racist ways. It's banned by Wisconsin's upon prison system for promoting game-related activities. They've been involved in some licensing and trademark disputes. And this is page one of thirty-two. So I have a little bit of concern about offering that course in, in the school district. Were there, I, were there any type of, I'm, I'm. Were there, I, were there any type of, I'm, I'm, we haven't heard of any type of issues that arose out of this.
Can I speak to you a little bit?
Yeah.
My, my son's in the club, and he goes to bed every day, he's a, he's a big nerd, but he goes to bed every night reading books about Dungeons and Dragons, just like wizarding spells and fantasy stuff. And, I mean, he, he's just absorbing these books and trying to solve problems, and he adores Mr. The Bryce, like, that class, there are kids in there that they live and breathe this dungeon stuff, and it's just, it, it's fun. There's nothing, like, strange or bad about it. It's all, since it's fantasy and so divorced from reality, then it doesn't feel like the shooter games that all his friends are playing, where they're like shooting people that look like people. Like, this is all wizardry, silly fantasy stuff that everybody's going to. Uh, the other thing is that Lincoln tells me, it's my son's name, he tells me that there are kids in there, some of them are high schoolers, that communicate a lot and really feel valued there, but at high school, they don't say anything. There's a niche in this club that they are finding some value that we're not able to get them in high school. And everybody's got some kind of niche. Some people like the band room or the baseball field. This class and this club and this person provide that niche for some people and that means valuable.
Well, I appreciate your perspective, because I've never played the game. I hadn't heard a word of any controversy or anything. What did I do? It was a club being offered after school and stuff, but I appreciate that perspective because I, I didn't, it was around when I was in school, I think, to be honest with you, Dungeons and Dragons, if I remember correctly. I never got the role-playing game.
I think some clubs and some groups have taken this to a place that have gotten pretty dark. That's not what Travis is doing.
So, question. And my question about it was, when I look at this, it looks like it's an eight to ten, eight a.m. to ten a.m., and you can take Dragons ads, Dungeons and Dragons, strength conditioning, and athletic skill development, or Taste of the Philippines, meaning you're taking one of them, not all four of them, correct?
No, you, this is, the kids sign up for this class, and it's not for just this class. They're not taking all of them.
And parents sign them up. They don't sign up for it, right? Like, so a parent would have signed them up for this and knowing that's what they're going to, just like a parent signing them up for the after-school.
That would be accurate.
We've had this class for a number of years. Before Travis had it, it was the other one, Ty.
Oh, it's Nancy.
That's Nancy.
Yeah, he, he started it ten, twelve years ago. I can't remember. Remember a problem? We've had it for a number of years.
Is it possible for a parent or community member to visit the class? I mean.
I'm, I'm sure he could share, like, I'm sure there's some sort of a structure. I think Dr. Watson made a very valid point, Dr. Chris's point there, is that certainly groups can run with this how they would, like, that there may be some folks who maybe take it to an area that we certainly would never bring up within a school system, and certainly not as a goal Mr. The Bryce has been doing. Because as I said, the towel was brought tonight. I, I knew it existed. I knew there were kids involved in it that were pretty excited about it, and I had not had any negative feedback. But I mean, we're transparent about it. I'm sure Travis could share kind of what the theory and what they're gonna go through and do with the class. That would absolutely be.
The curriculum of the class.
Yeah, with the students that were signed up.
I think my most critical aspect is that I wouldn't want anyone taking the class without their parents' consent, right? Like, so I would want to make sure that five through twelve, if someone's in it, their parents knew that's what they signed up for, and they supported them being a part of it.
Heather, in the registration process, the, the kids, the, the, the kids can't sign up without a parent authorization on the registration form.
Well, right, here in Hills, it's all be online. They're all signed, their names, things, so. The other thing too is when all the classes get organized, Mary Lou contacts parents and says, your child is enrolled in your summer school classes.
The Bryce, the same answer to that.
Yeah, that, that's what I, when I looked at it, if there was some controversy around it for some folks, in my mind, that can be taken away if parents are saying, this is what I'd like my kids, kids to be a part of. And parents can say, I don't want my kids to go to that, and then they would, they wouldn't go to it, so.
But we're, we're kind of, you know, held to a higher standard here in the school district. You know, I'm having these type of possible controversies, and somebody gets the wrong idea, and even if there's one individual that comes out on the wrong end of the spectrum or something like this, I mean, I, I don't want it to be like, why would Pittsfield? Why would they offer that when there's so many other options that they have in the school? Now our name is stamped on Dungeons and Dragons in central Wisconsin.
I think it's, it's offered because it's popular.
Which is, that's like for one thing, there's a thing like.
It's kind of the same thing if you did this on, who knows, somebody, some unknown person's based on it, that turned out like this, people under the guise of a, you know, an educator. An educator, I would think those would be, you know, I mean, I know, I mean, I know it's not the, in every game, probably area of your certain TV show.
Yeah, that's true. I might not know that.
Screened for things.
Oh, okay, that's right, I need to get out more, apparently.
I'll see you.
Other thoughts, comments? This is for discussion, so.
Do you need an action?
So.
I'll make the motion to approve the two thousand twenty-four summer school courses and teachers as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second your motion.
It's been moved in second to approve the two thousand twenty-four summer school courses and teachers as presented. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried on a four or one vote. Okay, early graduation request for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five.
One young lady, they have a faculty letter ready? Yeah, I, I support it, but for the reasons she's saying.
I'll make a motion to approve their graduation request. For the coming school year.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to approve the early graduation request for the next school year. All in favor, say aye.
Please, one question, one more second. I have one question, as I've read it. So what she's looking to leave for? Does she realize that she could actually stay and take those classes and we would pay for them?
It's the living situation that is her operating.
Okay, and the only reason I ask is because when I read the, read what it is, I'm like, oh my gosh, that is exactly, you know, why we, okay.
That was a conversation in my office.
So then she does, okay, thank you. I just, like, my heart went out to like, but we could help you get through a whole semester and let us help you.
If that were an option.
Okay, sorry.
Nope.
I, I'm sorry, Mary Ant.
No, 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 that's okay.
Okay, and so, yeah.
So all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item D is to set the date and time for the June budget hearing and annual meeting. It was then suggested to hold that on June tenth, which would be the second, the second Monday in June, prior to our regular board meeting. Any discussion? Okay, then I'll entertain the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve June tenth at six p.m. in the CTE conference room for a budget hearing and meeting.
Um, is there a second?
I will second.
Uh, any questions or discussion? Then I will call for a vote to approve the, okay, I lost my place. To approve June second as, June tenth as the date of the annual meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, the April second, two thousand twenty-four election results. We have two, we have the certificate of election and the law office.
Julie has the certificate. Do you, did you sign it?
Yeah.
Did you sign it right now in front of us?
Yep.
And that's for Mary Ant to sign.
And today is the eighth.
Congratulations, Julie, hot, hotly contested election.
The husband was the only write-in. I just did that video for the poor guy there, you know. Do I have to say any of this? No?
No.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay. Glad to have you sign on for another three years, Julie. Okay, um, the next thing under the election results is to appoint the school board representative to the CISA five board, not CISA five board, CISA. The school district representative to CISA five. Their annual convention is coming up on Thursday, May sixteenth. It's good to have someone to be able to attend. If you don't attend, it's not the end of the world. Do we have a volunteer?
Yeah, I happen to be free the next day, so I'll volunteer.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Um, so we, um, that doesn't take a vote. All we do is appoint Rick Winters as the Pittsfield School Board Representative to CISA five. Thank you, Rick, for volunteering. Point, a point, a point. Okay.
Thank you, Rick.
Yes, thank you for volunteering for that role, Rick. We look forward to your report. Okay. Um, next, we're going to move into some policies. First reading of updates to policy four forty-six, student searches. This was formally four forty-six point one. Um, so this is pretty much brand new.
Correct. So we reached out to Wasby and requested some samples of some student search policies related to some of the discussions from earlier, and this was, uh, yeah, how many, did we get? Seven? Did we get a few different examples, if I remember correctly?
No, this was just.
This was the only one? What's that?
This was right from WASB.
Yeah, this was the Wasby one here.
Yeah.
So this is Wasby's recommendation for a student, a comprehensive student search policy. So after it was discussed about the potential wanting to have a policy that was a more comprehensive, this is what Wasby recommended that we use.
So I would like to propose one addition, and I also understand that people don't agree with me, but just want to put it on record, my personal strong feeling about this. So under the search of students and/or their personal belongings, because I actually feel different about lockers. Lockers are the property of the school. I think you can go into them anytime you want to, for any reason. However, what belongs on a person or belongs to the student. The last statement of searches of students, person, or personal belongings should generally be conducted outside the presence of, presence of other students. School officials, employees, or agents shall not conduct a strip search with any student. I would like to add in there, shall, should generally be conducted with parental consent outside of the, like, again, in my mind, there's two different things. If there is an emergency, and there is an emergency need, you need to do what you need to do to keep everybody safe. But if it isn't an emergency, I think, and I'm okay leaving the word generally, which means there's reasons it wouldn't happen, and there's also, like, you can't always get a hold of people. Like, I mean, so I understand all of those things. I'm okay with the word generally, which gives a little flexibility that it won't be a hundred percent of the time. But, and I'm also okay that other people don't agree with me on that one, but like, that's just kind of a, um, a personal thing on my end, that I think the way we actually create these things to not be problems is to assure that parents are super involved in them, because that's who will help enforce the bigger picture of whatever it is that we might be finding, right? Is to have them super engaged. So, um, that would be my only suggestion. Otherwise, I'm good with it.
Do I comment?
Yeah, and again, I, I, people don't have to agree with me on it, so.
I do, and I agree about eighty-eight percent on this one.
That's pretty good.
So, so here would be my, my only concern would be, Julie, in eighty-eight percent of the time, the parents are in support. And I, I would wonder, only because like I said before with Wasby, is like, this is the board's legal counsel drafts these, and we may think, like, to me, that makes sense, like, we always try to. I would want to verify, and I consider this is first reading. I can reach back out and say, would there be an issue with including that language? Because my only concern would be, and I think, talking to Jeremy about chief about it at one point, was that it, that it potentially, like, who decides what's considered an emergency situation? And then if you have a parent saying, well, this isn't an emergency, and we deem it is for the safety of our students, that would be the only concern I have is that I would want to run that language and say, would that potentially restrict us or put us in legal jeopardy at doing a search if we, because here's what the reality is. I would probably rather get chastised for being wrong on something, like, if we thought that there was a threat than to, to not be able to do it and have something happen. Would be the only thing, but we're about eighty-eight to ninety percent on the same page. I can do that research regardless, like, if that's what we're requesting. I'll ask Tony and Wasby, would there be any concerns with including, including that reference too? So I wrote it down here, with parental consent.
Or he thinks that word should go somewhere else. I only suggested it going there because it was with the word generally. And I am okay that there are reasons that you would do it without it.
Yep.
So I, I felt like it was the best place to put it so that it wasn't like absolutely black and white, but gave the intent that that's what we want to do, and we want, like, that would be.
It, it seems different, that, that seems more like the practice, obviously. If we had some sort of other like handle, then we, this is our practice, to follow instead of.
It's a good question to ask, too.
The policy, because if you start, if you start putting it there, you have to, then we're kind of like contradicting the first general.
And I would say, that's a great point, and I would say generally, our practice would be in situations both with, you know, anytime when police are, their policy related to, uh, when police are contacted, notifying the parents, you know, those type of situations. And we do, we try to do this because you guys are spot on that bringing the parents into this is absolutely a winning track. It's just those exceptional circumstances where it may not, maybe we can't get a hold of somebody or.
Well, that's my question, is like, you can't get a hold of parents.
Yeah.
You know, and it's like, yeah, you really, I mean, in the meantime, kid, something disappears.
I would get clarification on those. I'll ask multiple questions, but what I'll do, Julie, I, I think, I'd like to articulate the concern is, is that we're, we're doing these things without parents having any notification, right? We're doing that, that is not in one of those situations where it's like there's imminent danger or something. Is that what, just to clarify?
I mean, there's a lot of times that you might search for something that it isn't, you wouldn't call it imminent danger. It's, it, I mean, you might find something illegal, you might find something, but it isn't imminent danger, like, not right that second.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You know, there isn't a, there isn't something ticking in there.
I get the concept of what you want to know, so I'll, I'll ask.
Right, so I just, um, because I know that this will be, like, this will be a topic that if we approve this and there isn't something, we're gonna get asked. And so, um.
I mean, just like, just like a, a, a weird example is that Jeremy is ninety percent sure through witnesses or that somebody has narcotics on them, that the parent, like, in their pocket or whatever. I don't think we would want to have the parent be the hold on something like that.
And I'm not sure that I, I wouldn't recommend that parents have to give approval.
It's just she's saying notification.
There's other, I mean, reasons for search, there's multiple reasons that, you know, just articulations and justifications for search. Searches are a very sensitive issue. And you have to be able to, like I said, articulate why you're doing what you're doing, and there is an imminent factor in this. Parents, if, if, if we could, could get parents involved, yes. That's always a great thing, but there, even when it comes to, and every situation is different. And we know if it's a weapon, there's an imminent fact. If it's a babe, it's not going anywhere. Okay, so what, what, what the key phrase here is, we have to operate in good faith and in reasonableness. We, everything has to break, basically, you know, before decisions are made, you have to ask yourself, you know, I mean, how, 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 would a reasonable person do this if they were presented the same situation as what I'm doing right now? Because it's ultimately gonna come down to a jury's decision if it becomes, becomes an issue, right? So it's hard to sit and put a, a direct label of with a parent being there on, on. So it's hard to sit and put a, a direct label of with a parent being there on, on a decision that is, could go in so many different directions. You'd almost have to list reasons why in these situations we would contact a parent. This is, I think this is well stated. But I do understand the parents.
Julie, if I had to, my instincts tell me what they may be concerned about is the consent word that was used. They may talk about notification as being a word, like, that we would notify the parent and not get that consent.
Yes.
So I'll get clarification on both of those, but I'm guessing, I'm just going to say, I think that's what they're going to say is the consent piece. We don't want to use the word consent, but notifying is always a good thing.
Notification, okay. And would that notificat, would that notification have to take place before the search? That would be what I would ask for the search. It would be prior notification. Now, it wouldn't have to be prior approval. Because you're not asking for approval whether you get them before or after. But the attempt would be made that the notification would happen prior if it's not imminent danger. I mean, imminent danger, you just take care of what you need to and deal with stuff after, right? Like, I'm not, but if there is an imminent danger, I, I would love that our policy says that we will notify ahead of time. Not seek permission, not, uh, you know, all of those things, but notification.
So we're going to answer this.
Okay, thanks.
And I'll listen.
Again, I'm just one voice, so if people don't agree, that's, I can be respectful of that. So do you think that handles law enforcement? I, I'm just being the devil's side because we have law enforcement here.
Constitutional rights are extremely important. And when you break that trust of the public, it's, it's tough. But now this is a board policy, uh, that you want. And I'm certain that there's information available to, to exclude its parents in, uh, since I've recognition that these are our policies and that, you know, your child could be subject to this if given, you know, presented with a situation. So it might be a, you know.
Like a handbook, a reminder in the handbook.
Of course, handbook's up for revision in June, um, and if the board represents a policy here, this is one that's important enough to students. And I would put the, um, version, like, a summary of that in the first.
I think that's good.
Yeah, so, but then they got to sign that when they do their entry.
Especially within the law.
Yes.
That's great.
Sounds good. Uh, do I, um, good discussion. Um, any further discussion or are we ready to, um, move that forward? We don't need a motion for that. Just move it forward, okay, sounds good. Okay, um, next is, um, item G. Approval of updates to policy 133, filling board vacancies, 133 exhibit. Notice, 133 exhibit B. Declaration of eligibility, 133 exhibit C, and notification of.
I'll make the motions go through.
Is there a second?
No, second, third motion.
Okay, any discussion, comments? Then I'll in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Second reading and approval of updates to policy 163, board member development opportunities.
I have a motion.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the second reading and approve updates to policy 163. I'll in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item I, second reading of new policy, 164, board member compensation and expenses. 164 rule, board member compensation and expenses. 164 exhibit, communication of refusal of school board member. School board member salary.
It's school board member salary.
Ah, yes, that's what the policy title is. Any questions on this one or comments? Then I'll entertain a motion to, um. Approve, accept the second reading and approve updates to policies 164, 164 rule, and 164 exhibit. Is there a second? I'll second it. Um, any, for any discussion? Then we'll call for a vote, I'll in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Second reading and approval of updates to policy 171, regular board meetings.
Can we do 171, 171, 1, 171, 2 at the same time?
Aye, I think we probably.
I'll make a motion to approve 171, 171.1, public petition of board meetings, and 171.2, the agenda preparation and dissemination.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? I'll in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item M, uh, second reading and approval of updates to policy 172, special board meetings.
I'll make a motion to accept second reading and approve updates to policy 172.
Is there a second?
No, second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the second reading and approve updates to policy 172. I'll in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Second reading and approval of updates to policy 175, the annual meeting. And special meeting of district electors.
I'll make a motion to accept the second reading and approve updates to policy 175.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve updates to policy 175, I'll in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, second reading and approval of new policy 181, which relates to rules of order. I do have one request if we accept this. Um, do we have a copy of Robert's Rules of Orders available? Do you have that down?
I can have it on my desk.
Okay. Um, I think if we're going to.
And I have a small, little, something, too. One of those little.
Okay, I think it would be good to bring along.
Yep, I have the cheat sheet.
Sounds good. Is there a motion?
I'll motion to approve policy 181.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve updates to policy 181, I'll in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item P, um, approval of updates to policy 763 rule, management of school, of students, school year accounts.
I'll make a motion to accept the second reading and approve the updates, uh, violated, policies 763 rule.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve updates to policy 763 rule, I'll in favor. Aye, opposed, motion carried. We're on to item Q, employee wages and benefits, and the four items underneath that.
I have hard podium.
Uh-huh, it's still, uh.
Now, D and R are using.
Oh, they trumped us today.
So we have a lot of moving pieces, so I'd like to go through each piece. And I've put together, like, a couple of options, but you guys can use a match, I'll be right. I like, I can do the most, I guess, logical in my mind, but it does seem that's the same logic here as anybody else's mind. So as historically we have looked at as, um, all of our options for salaries and wages, we always present two types. So the 2.21 is the teachers' cumulative increase. So that's based off of their pay scale that you guys have compared against 2022. Um, so with everybody getting their staff increase, um, they get a 2.21 at the teacher level cumulative. So then we parlay that into our elderly, um, staff and our administrative staff as well. So then that's what's highlighted here in blue. Then over here is CPI is 4.12. So that's what's highlighted over here, which increase, and you can see that the additional cost for that 1.91% increase to CPI is about $8,000 dollars overall for salaries and wages for our current staff. Now that's, um, our continually teaching staff only and, um, our elderly staff that are continuing. So anyone that's put in their letter of resignation or retirement are not captured. So I've got, um, I tried to kind of color coordinate budget one, budget two, because if we go to referendum, we're going to need to present two budgets. Um, that's the goal for the budget hearing meeting, as I'm going to be preparing to, um, we won't know until the next board meeting if we're going that direction. So budget one would be no operational referendum. We keep it at 2.21 cumulative increase for teachers using the pay scale, 2.21 increase for elderly and then to match that teachers' cumulative increase. Budget two with an operational referendum, or if you choose to just go straight to CPI with, you know, with or without the operational referendum. That could be paid to teachers and administration either after the referendum passes as supplemental pay or at its, and either way, that would be, that would all be out of your base that you're in. Um, and everybody that's elderly would be paid retroactive, so I would take whatever their hours are and figure the difference and then get a back pay. So if you would choose that option right away, um, just everyone would go based on their base salary. This year, um, teachers, if you remember, they had that rule of the supplemental that will get added to their base. Um, and then they would get just 4.12 across the board. So those are the kind of the two options for salaries and wages. Any questions just on that piece right now?
Can I, can I jump in, Pam, just on this piece too?
Yes.
So this is a hot button topic, obviously, that we've, you know, um, the way you look at it is frankly, is any, anything less than CPI is a pay cut. Uh, is what it comes down to. And we've already talked about for our teaching staff, they're forty-third out of forty-fourth. It's one of our pillars that we've identified as attracting and retaining staff. The challenge is we know that budget we're operating under those limitations. So that's why we've laid out the, the, the per cell increase that was in there, that's in the model, like, that's, that's locked in and guaranteed.
This is our, yes, this is our salary model.
That's the model. That additional piece, um, to get to the 4.12 would be effectively to stay with the inflation, to stay even with inflation. So, like, we're well aware when we, we talk to staff, transparent to staff, anything where you increase the cost for staff or benefits or don't keep up with CPI is a pay cut because you have less spending power. Um, so, so we tried to lay this out in a fiscally responsible way to say, this is where we're at. And, and what this lays out for you that we've talked about really is more so the, the, the need that we're exploring for an operational referendum. Because the dollars just aren't there. Um, Pam, I don't know if the staffing piece that we discussed is in the, um, in this presentation, I don't believe it is, is that as far as FTEs, actual FTEs, with what we're going into proposing as of right now, and that includes the ones that are posted. So I just want to talk about that briefly, is that we're, we're going to be back to 21, 22 levels for staffing. Next year, we had a slight increase because we had some positions funded through ESAR. So, so when, if there may be, while we've added staff, it's got, no, we're actually going to be back to levels of 21, 22 with staffing. However, obviously with inflation and other costs increasing, we're still looking at a deficit, a significant one, even with, you know, some, through attrition and people moving into different spots and stuff. It's been a challenge, but I, I just feel, Pam and I, we talked about this extensively, this is that we laid these numbers out for the board because we wanted you to see that, that, uh, um, I would tell you in conversations with the, you know, the teachers, is that obviously their, their hope is a, to stay with the CPI with the 4.12, so anyway.
Right, and it's still keeping the true optics of a fiscal impact, right?
Yep.
You know, so both options are laid out, is one more rights and the other one not at all. I mean, it's just, I've laid it out, you can see the fiscal impact. Um, if referendum passes, everyone will still get all of, you know, their money, it just wouldn't start until later.
Because our, our other goal, if the board were to decide to go referendum, the other goal would be not only to, because I, I mean, this, this board is well aware of this. If we even just stay with inflation, we're going to stay forty-third out of forty-fourth if other districts are doing that. The goal would be if, if we were to look at an operational referendum, the board to choose, part of that would be to be able to add some percentage points to that each year for those four years or whatever it may be, to try to bring staff up over the bottom area with that. So not just stay at CPI, but also build in something into the model to try to move that needle, uh, with our staff in the future.
And the board has done CPI adjustments to the pay scale. Five, I think, the last five years, we've done that, so we've, we've stayed as consistent as we've possibly could. Uh, the next one then.
I have a question on this one.
Oh, yes.
Sure.
The, the, the 2.21, that's already, we already agreed, so we would.
Right, that would be, well, for the teachers, that's their pay scale, so that would be the teachers, so.
And so if we did, if we did that across the board, it's a ninety-two thousand.
Correct, a $2,000 dollar increase.
But if the CPI one, it's 172 total, right? It's not 172 on top of ninety-two.
Correct, it's 172 total, and this would be the difference between the two, the eighty, the seventy-nine nine. That's the difference between CPI and the 2.21.
And so, like, are you saying overall, like, your indication is that regular annual deficit is number 2.21? For.
Um, I, I think potentially. Potentially, yes, because we're losing about $170,000 in ESAR money that we were using to fund staffing before. Right now, I've got a, a running grid going with all the ups and downs of staff that are retiring, resigning, um, staff that have moved to other position, right now we're at about a net negative 15,000.
So the blue, the 2.21 possibly going to be close, the CPI would definitely be running.
This would be close.
And the other one definitely.
That one will, will put some deficit with elder referendum.
Right, okay.
Or additional, I'm going to get the additional plus when you look at the whole picture, I would get to the additional.
And our goal has been all along here is, we're not counting on a referendum, like, if there's a need that we've explored, but we're trying to build as close to a balanced budget as we can, that in the event that the board chooses not to explore that, or it doesn't pass, we're still able to operate. So that's been the goal, to stay as close as possible to a balanced budget without, without that.
Yeah, so then the dental vision one, please, Sam.
So I will start with the dental piece first. Um, our premiums for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year have decreased 0.5%. The ADA has come out with a recommendation that, um, to reduce the amount of x-rays being done. So in incorporating that into our po, our policy, our premium went down. Otherwise, it would remain flat if we would change that, but we wanted to be responsible and follow ADA's recommendations. Um, vision had a zero percent policy change, so that was okay. So we're going to start at the blue section first, because that would be my budget one. You see, there's a theme, budget one is in the blue. So the, I've changed the cost share percent here to eighty-five, 15% versus the ninety-ten. So what's in the light orange is the ninety-ten, which is what the district is doing currently. So we're shifting about sixty-seven, eight, six thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars to the employee off of the district by doing that. Vision, um, if we say ninety-ten, there's no. Vision, um, if we say 910, there's no change, there's no increase or decrease for vision. If we go 8515, there's about $436 that we shift from district cost to employee cost. Again, is there a right, is there a wrong? No, I'm just showing you both options at this point. So, if the board decided we're going to do budget one, but if a referendum is attempted and passed, we consider we'll retroactively adjust it back to the July one premiums. You know, it's, coming work, we'll just modify the, the payments going forward for the rest of the school year for everybody, and we could reverse it and go back to the 910.
Pam, do you know what percentage of our staff penalized though?
I was just gonna ask, that'll come in at the end.
Got it.
That'll come in at the employees.
72%.
Yeah, so that'll be coming, yeah, because you have on the top how many you're using it.
Right, right now, 94.
Yes, that's who's, yes, currently signed up as of our, our bill for March.
Okay? And Debbie, you can go to the health insurance scenario one. So, historically, I've always presented like the, the front page of your document on actual costs. So, this last year, we had our two plans, the signature plan and the tier three plan. I've got the amount of users for the signature on top, the amount of users for choice three at the bottom. The district's overall cost for both, for what's this year as of our March bill is 1.38 million. That's the district share at 87.4%. So, that's.
46 employees?
Are 46 employees taking it, correct? No, 46 plus 23 up here. So, we, those is both plans together, because we have, we.
Two different choices for staff.
Okay, I'm, wait, I'm lost?
We, we give staff two options for health plans. These are also combining the numbers below the 46 plus 23 is the number of staff that take some form of our insurance, one of those two things.
Right, 23 people on the signature plan. Well, I know that's where we are, but where are the, I can't, I.
What are we, what are we using?
There's the number, so that takes.
Got it, okay, so 13 and 10, that's what I thought.
One last question, have we ever had, or did they quote out just a third option of like a, a $10,000 family deductible, like a 5,000, 10,000?
Um, the co-op made an addition to plan that, because there are like 14 school districts in the co-op. So, they possibly have offered something like that in the past. I, I don't know.
But we couldn't add that because of how.
Not individually.
Not individually, we're in the co-op.
We're in the co-op.
Okay, and the other reason I ask that is because I'm not saying it's a great plan, but I am saying that for some people, it's a great plan because you pay hardly anything to have it, and you don't use health insurance, and you can have some money in your HSA for when you need to go to the doctor. And, I mean, some people having a $10,000 deductible or having a $1,500 deductible are quite frankly the same, because you spend about $700 a month, a year in health insurance, and so you're paying the whole bill regardless if you have a $10,000. Granted, that has to, you know, something huge that would happen would be different, but again, I just didn't know if that, because that's how I've seen other health insurances be able to keep things in, like, just even employees premiums not skyrocketing, because you have really high deductibles, but for some people, that's a good fit.
And the co-op meeting is on the 10th. So, we couldn't present this unless we did it in a special meeting. We're going based off of what they presented a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, there's a weapon or a couple of weeks ago.
That said kind of where they thought the, the co-op was going and what Aspire Health Plan was going to move.
And can I just ask one additional question, just to give me some parameters around things? One, my question I sent to you, like, do we have to make a decision on this tonight?
Yes, if we're gonna have open enrollment.
Okay, that was my, that was my email I sent you, was just to know, like, are we having to, like, actually, so that's helpful, so that gives context. The second is, and I understand it, probably not, but like, what's our commitment to staying with the co-op?
I would have to pull out all the legal, no, we have, we have a commitment to so many years, and I would have to pull that out. Um, we've set aside $84,900 in a pool that's just sitting out there as our guarantee that we're gonna stay in the co-op for that length of time. So, I would have to look, see what that length of time is.
Okay.
Before we would lose that any one night.
And I don't wanna be dense in asking, Julie, do you mean, like, the relevance of staying in, like, for us to stay in the co-op?
I don't know that we, we would really have to look to see if we wanna leave the co-op.
Well, I was educated on this, that's why I asked this question, because I asked that question last year about, like, there are districts that are exploring going out on their own with health insurance, and it was actually a conversation at superintendent meeting last year, some districts were exploring that. The, the advantage of the co-op would be it, it smoothes things out, because if you're a small district and you have a couple of catastrophic illnesses, it, your rates will go through the roof and it levels it up, and actually, our usage rates this year were quite.
2.6% of premium, 200.6% of premium.
Was that what you were asking or no, I think that's what.
No, it, I know exactly what you're talking about, because I was faced with the other, like, like, this is a huge deal for companies, and we're a company that has about the same number of employees that use insurance, and I can tell you, we pay half. And our employees pay hardly anything for their premium now by how we reconfigured it. And it, you wouldn't be able to implement it this year anyways, like, you need some time to implement it, but I just didn't know how long we were tied to having to go this direction.
I would have to pull that paperwork.
Because what I would tell you is the employees literally went, went and grabbed the exact same plan individually, and it cost half. It's crazy.
Our people can't go to the marketplace.
Yes, they can. It's, it's a special, it's a specific kind of a health plan.
Oh, okay.
That was, actually, it's about four years, like, it's been around between four and five years.
I know before we got into the co-op, the district was uninsured, nobody wanted us.
And so were we, and that's why we did this.
Well, no, we had, our experience rates were like.
Well, so I'd say we're, we're too risky and too small.
They didn't want us, nobody would insure us.
Completely understand, exactly the same scenario.
But I mean, that's always something I agree to bring up with the Canadian on April 10.
And that would be contingent on, yeah, we'll find out about the co-op, but it's our obligation.
And again, you can't, you can't implement it in 30 days anyways. There's a lot of education and a lot of things, but when I, when I look at things continually increasing like this, um, you know, I would rather, I'd rather take 5, 600,000 and throw it on their salaries and get a better health plan option, right? Like, it's not about taking it away, it's about how can we give it to them so that it's actually in their pocket and what that costs. So, okay, thank you, you grounded me in what we have to do tonight.
So, the first page then, first scenario one is just last year's. Oh, I thought this would go up. Okay, so the, the projection then, again, we don't know 100%, M3, the co-op is looking at, you know, they're figuring a 9.5% increase based on the 2.6%, 206% increase in costs. They are also, the ACA regulations for an HSA qualified plan is moving from a 1,503,000 deductible to a 1,600 individual to a $3,200 family. And that will be, we will get that for sure information on the 10th, but from what I read, that premium, or excuse me, that deductible increase, how that will affect our premium, I, I don't know yet at this point. It, it cannot go above 9.5% increase at this point, it cannot, because we signed a contract with Aspire Health Plan that it would not. So, if our same amount of people stay signed up for what we have, um, the total cost of the district under the new would be, excuse me, 1.5 million dollars would be the cost of the district if we stay with our same 87.4% district paid, 12.6 employee paid. Now, I figured in, um, I just, it's not working for me, I just wanna be able to see the bottom here, there we go. Okay, so, and I also noted what we did last year. I'm, I'm keeping the HSA the same at this point, and I'll tell you a little bit later why. Basically, that's, that's gonna be a no, no impact, you know, it's the same last year and this current school year to next year, so that's no impact. So, the total increase to the district, um, the, the difference between last year and this year, the total increase to the district with the 9.5% will be 131,517. So, increase to the employees will be 18,960. Now, breaking that increase down though, I did break this on the document, but I manually help, no, no, I did not, not in this one. And then, let's go to scenario two, please, Pam. So, that's just keeping everything the same as it was last year, complete salary for that one. Scenario two, um, I'm going to go to 8515. So, the first page is the same, that's just the current year again, go to the second page. So, here I've, I've changed each of these to be a 85 district, 15% employees, so we're shifting about 2.4%, 2.4% of the costs. So, if we look at that, schools are just a little bit more down. So, we, we went from $131,000 to about 89,900 additional cost to the district. This is the employee split. It looks, you know, yes, it's going up 30% grand total, but if we look at, who, what I found is just industry, yes, yep. So, these are the amounts that the employee has to pay per year. So, if you're on a family plan for Aspire Sig, the signature plan, you're paying out of your paycheck 42,650.
42,400.
42,000.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just had a hard time.
Sorry, 4,265. So, over the 20 paychecks, that's an extra $34. The 1,879 would be for a single, and over the 20 paychecks, that's an extra 15 dollars per paycheck. If you're on the choice, which we all know that has a higher premium, the 4,600 for family would be just under $37 extra over the 20 paychecks, and the 2,027 dollars total that the single would pay on the choice three tier would be 16 dollars. So, split over the paychecks, they're not a huge amount. Okay, Debbie, you can go down just a little bit more. So, here the difference between scenario one and scenario two is we're gonna shift the cost of about 41,600 off the district to the employees. That's the difference between the two. Again, is there a right, is there a wrong? Not really, I mean, they're just two different scenarios I'm presenting. Okay, Debbie, then you can go to the summary for employee costs and benefits. All right, so in this document, I put everything together. Again, I created two options, and you can just, you can choose all of them, however you choose to approve changes. So, on option one, salaries and wages, from option one to option two do not change. I have budget one, what we do stuff with the increments of the 92,465, and budget two for both of them at the 172 and 392. So, a total additional cost between budget one and budget two of 79,700. So, dental and vision, we've kinda gotta keep together because it's a package deal from Delta. So, I figured it, the 8515% here, so it, it just shows that there's a decrease of 7900 over what it cost the district last year for both budget one and two. And over here, where we're funding at the 910%, it's a decrease of the 620 because of the premium decrease for each of them. This is strictly district cost. Health insurance, for both budgets, I'm doing the 910%. So, you can see what it looks like if we just say we're just keeping health insurance at 910 split. And so, you can see the impact in there, the 1.5 million. Then, option two, I did the 8515 in the blue, and then I did the 910 in budget two.
But there, this is 910 now, isn't it 87.4 and 12.6?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're 100% right.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I wrote that for dental, and I wasn't thinking you're right. That is 97, 6, and.
Okay.
97, 4, 87, 4, and 12, 6, yeah.
So, that's consistent with what we currently.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just missed.
No, that's okay, that's okay, great.
Um, HSA, I'm proposing that in budget one, we don't fund it, in budget two, that we would fund it. Um, and what, I, I then, you scroll down a little bit more, Debbie? So, some comments I wanted to make is, we all know that we passed the budget last year with about 290,000 deficit in Fund 10. So, Fund 10 and Fund 27 basically go together. Fund 27 has no gain or loss, but a gain or loss washes through Fund 10, so I considered the two of them together. So, we need to look at reducing costs just to break even of 290,000. We have asked all building levels and area budgets, so like athletics as well, to reduce our overall budget by 10%. Um, salaries and wages changes, that affects everybody, every single permanent staff member. Dental, vision, health insurance, and HSA affect about 73% of our permanent staff. So, that, I wanted to kind of shed light on that, that while it's fabulous to have the 87, 4, 12, 6 split, maybe sharing the cost a little bit more, it, it, it's a little bit more burdened, not 73% people, but increasing the wages affects everybody. So, I just kinda wanted to find out those numbers. So, for sure, my suggestion right now is that we have to, I am starting to prepare two budgets. So, tonight, I think we need to pass budget one and a budget two, so that when we present it to our staff in May at open enrollment, they're aware of it. If we wait too long, they have to do their paperwork, and I don't want to blindside anybody with it. So, that's just a reiteration of salaries and wages then, just the 2.21, if there is no operational referendum, if there is, or if you wish to jump to CPI, then we'd increase to 4.12 right away, or we could start at 2.21, add supplemental if the referendum passes, and we would do retroactive pay for our vision. Dental, vision insurance, and yes, there should be E at the end there. So, we would change that to the 8515 with no referendum, or if we want to do with operational referendum, or consider it a CPI part of the budget, the 910 split, or we could do 8515 and retroactively calculate it. Health insurance, as Julie indicated, should be 87, 4, 12, 6. And so, those two scenarios, one and two, if the premium doesn't increase 9.5, fabulous, we'll do happiness, but that would be, you know, the highest cost at this point that we see. And then, if you just scroll a little bit further, for the HSAs, if we fund half, you know, if we pass the referendum, fund half now, or excuse me, half in December after a general day payment, and half in January after a levy payment. If we decide to do it right away, I would like to only fund it in half in July, and then half in December after we get that day payment, because that's really gonna scrap our cash, because I'm throwing almost $60,000 out of our cash at a point in time when we don't have it, because we pay out all the teachers' contracts at the end of June, we don't get the rest of our levy money until August. So even though it's all our money and we should have it in this school year, we don't see it till August. So July is an extremely tight financial month. So if you decide you wanna pay it all right away, I would like the option to split it half in July and half in December. It's a lot of information. If you wanna scroll back up to the top of this page, Deb. So I don't know what's easiest for you, if we just take it apart, ask your questions.
Pam, can I ask a question for the board in discussion?
Yes.
You know, you talked about projections, the one big one hanging on right now is the insurance. But we have a reasonable idea that it's gonna be no more than nine point five, and likely it is gonna be nine point five.
Right, it cannot be more than nine point five.
What else, as far as right now, you know, we've projected out, we kinda know where we're at with staffing right now. We have a couple positions still to finalize. Where there's a little bit of, otherwise things are pretty much set where they're at right now. When you talked about that, we're at about a fifteen thousand dollar deficit right now. There's a few, there are a few things that could change outside of health insurance.
Oh, definitely, I mean, just given with health insurance. We could have somebody that takes family health insurance, choice three, and we're putting out twenty-three thousand dollars the district is for that one person that could decide, hey, I'm gonna use the opt-out, I'll go on my spouse's insurance, or if I'm married, I'll go on my spouse's insurance. Well, that's twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, that's
And savings.
Right, that would, well, it'd be twenty thousand in savings, because we still do the the board has said they passed it for two years, that five thousand dollars.
And I would tell you, even more importantly, that I put in a shameless plug for that opt-out arrangement is, is that the value of that is, is that this, that gives people unconditional choice that have that ability of, if it gets to the point where they can say, listen, I'll take the five thousand dollars opt-out, and when they're doing that, that's a win-win. And it's to Julie's point earlier about looking at a different healthcare option where that money, that five hundred thousand dollars in savings Julie talked about could go into salaries, that that money, even if you're breaking even on the opt-out, that money's going into the pocket of staff instead of two insurance companies.
Well, I heard a little something last year or there too, where the people who are on choice three that chose it, so they had an option to use, you know, other areas other than just the Spire sponsored, you know, clinics are gonna switch to the Signature, because they really didn't use it to the benefit of letting them to pay actually premiums.
Well, and that's the benefit of the other plan that we moved to, is now every, like, we're kind of in, now our employees can choose to either get security, help or Spire survives. And so it gave that freedom of being able to go where you wanted to too. So I do think that, again, depending on how long you're tied into, you know, but I do think that there are some new options that have come out that they're not brand new, so, and a lot of companies are actually embracing them now. I would also say, and I just did some really quick numbers, but where I stand on this, is I'd like to see more wages in people's pockets and I'd like to see where we can't, like, the money that we can use, we pay in wages. And I would even propose, and I know it's not here as an option, I just quickly did some math, but I'd be okay with an insurance being eighty-twenty, not even eighty-five fifteen, to then funnel that money actually into salaries and to get it into every one hundred percent people's pockets. So, that's where I stand on it, is, I mean, it'd be awesome to be able to afford the three hundred and three thousand. We can't afford that without, like, you'll have to cut positions if we, if we do that. Like, I don't think we can afford every, like, to say yes to every possible option without referendum.
Yeah, Julie.
And I also think that, I'm not really a fan, a fan of putting referendum out there of like, like, I, I know it can enhance, like, I liked what you said about it enhancing the whole thing in the referendum, not just like going from this to this, because I, I feel like that it creates a culture in that that can make people feel really bad if it's not passed. Like, someone didn't appreciate, and I don't, that's not what it, like, and I don't want people to feel that way. But, my two cents would be, I absolutely would want to get to at least CPI, knowing that we already are on the bottom end of pay and even potentially create some opportunities to make some steps forward. And if we have to make shifts to insurance, well, let's just make it. And it's, I mean, I would even propose that it could even be a little bit more. Eighty-twenty is not something that's out of the realm of what exists out there, especially if that means we can put more money in people's pockets. Because then if you're not taking it, you get the money. And you have choices of whether you take it or you take other plans. So I definitely would like to see us focus on assuring that we're moving salaries up and making some concessions. And maybe we don't, we may only have to go eighty-five fifteen right now, but like, I would even go even, I'd even be willing to even go further on that piece of it, but not the salaries.
The only thing, I, I haven't done the eighty-twenty, so I can't guarantee that we would meet the ACA threshold for affordability. So we have to meet that requirement, and I could do that math on a hundred percent. So I wouldn't know who would meet the affordability for that.
Sure.
And I can, I can probably calculate that out pretty quick.
So, what, I think I heard you saying, Pam, and I know we have some sample motions here, is that you're preparing two budgets.
I will be, yes, regardless, I have to do two.
Okay. And, so we could theoretically approve two different options.
Right, or you could say budget one and budget two are gonna be identical, this is what we want, playing simple. Or you could do a budget one and a budget two totally separate.
With budget two being if, if the board decides to go to referendum and the referendum were to pass.
Right, so then in that situation, it's
We would, we would need to go, the board, because of the timelines, if the board is leading in the direction of an operational referendum, we would need to have a resolution in May. And, and I had actually reached out to Tony, running to ask him to draft a, the, he would not be into the specifics yet, it would just be that's the time when you have to indicate we are going to be looking at a referendum, then the board would decide later on. And you can resend that, with, with the board could change at any point, opt-out the referendum. But if you don't meet by that deadline, we wouldn't be able to go to referendum at all.
Right.
Correct.
Right, so I, I will start building budgets actually, something, I'm gonna start tomorrow, depending on the outcome of this, so I will be building two. And we just, one, we have to be realistic, if we go to referendum and when we set our final levy in October, we will be setting two final ones. One budget one, one budget two. If it doesn't pass, we're stuck with budget one and whatever we said as a budget. Hopefully, it will be close to break even, because, yes, we have a line of credits, that will help with cash flow, but it starts getting too much, then it's a bunch eating up fundamentals.
And looking at, projecting this how it is, that we've referenced it a couple times, is getting to that as close to balance as possible, is that whether the referendum passes or not, we're going into next year, like, without looking, there's no cuts, like, right, next year is next year.
Right.
But after this year, and this is the second year of a biennial budget, so we know the numbers. We don't know what that future one is gonna be, but I can tell you this much, if they don't change the per pupil revenue limits for us, no matter what they get, unless it's outside the revenue limit's head, will have no impact. And the next year after, the year after next, is the one that we're particularly concerned with, because when you see at that point, these costs continuing to increase and those things, there will be no more, at that point, there will be no more money.
Right, you should, we're projected, you know, based on my other scenario of giving the three twenty-five per people inside the revenue limit, but that's kind of small potatoes, because our property values went up as well, so they were probably gonna negate each other, or property values may actually wipe it off completely.
And that's the challenge with
We don't know yet, so I'll start doing a projection, that's the tricky thing. So, okay, I'm, I'm trying to think ahead strategically somewhat and messaging. And I've seen this happen in other districts, I read about it happening in other districts, where you, where the message is, well, this is our budget for the coming year and if you, community, if it's not passed, we have to cut.
That is not gonna be our messaging, because we're not planning, that is why we're working right now at a balanced budget, because that is not gonna be the message, because we're not going
On budget one will be a balanced budget, that's our goal, is to have a balanced budget. Balanced, our budget two would be if the referendum passes, we're gonna have a surplus so that now we can do these other projects
Put money back to the financial.
What the capital project committee is gonna look at, you know, putting more into unbalanced
Invest.
In our employees.
Yes.
So, Pam, what can we afford for you to bring us a balanced budget?
Well, honestly, I, a balanced budget would be staying, probably in option two. So that our increase stays at one hundred and fifteen for right now. I mean, that's our best chance of getting an operational, excuse me, getting a balanced budget. In, because in the budget one that we presented in June.
Julie, to answer, to answer that question you asked earlier about that, going to the four point one two, if the board were to approve higher insurance costs, there could be some wiggle room to make it, where the numbers stay the same, where you could get to that four point one two.
That's what I, that's what I averaged it really.
So to be clear, that, that could work yet, and then also as Pam said, there are still a few, hey, we, we could catch like in a bottle, the rates could come in below nine point five percent for the increase, which is gonna be dollars. We could have someone during the opt-out period, the open enrollment period, like Pam said, choose, where we could still, even then with the board going with the full four point one two funding then, do that, where we can still get a balanced budget. There's still some stuff that, that's in play that could work out, but we're projecting some things. There's just some unknowns that we don't know that could change.
And look, the other day it changes.
It changes.
Oh, yeah.
And if you, I mean, and maybe you already have, or, I mean, have we asked employees? If we only have this much dollars, like, you know, this is what we're able to do, would you rather have a four point two one, or a four point one-two percent increase and we take the difference of that from the two point and that has to shift to insurance to balance out what that looks like? Or would you rather it be, you know, uh, two point something percent and keep, like, do we have any sense in what our employees would prefer for us to invest in?
I would say specifically, we haven't had the Congress, I haven't had the conversations with staff about like moving to, there's, staff goes very strongly, and like I said, spoken to a few people about at least staying at the CPI. Like, at least at that for the salary portion, that's what I've heard about.
I agree.
Have we talked regularly, like, have I talked to staff about, well, what if that, yeah, they pay more in defense? No, I haven't had that specific conversation. What I will tell you is the conversation that has come up is, is that, you know, board would at least like to stay at CPI, and I think I mentioned it, I think that's pretty reasonable as a goal, right? I think we want more than that, but we also are trying to do this in the constraints of, of a tight budget. But, that would be my, have we done a survey with all staff? No, Julie, we haven't, but, but what I've heard from staff feels very strongly about, you know, the four point one two.
When, when we had done a meeting, I can't remember, we did like a state of the school and we had an optional meeting for staff to attend at the end of the day service, we did explain to them that, you know, our goal is not to cut any staff if a referendum doesn't pass, that a referendum may be necessary and we would need to look at classroom decreases, perhaps changes to insurance coverages. So, they've, they've been made aware of the possibility, we've not surveyed them. Because honestly, if you surveyed them right now, seventy-three percent of them using health insurance. So, that would be most likely weighted that way by a lot of them. Some of them are still gonna vote for my wages, but for some people, a five percent, ten percent, you know, a six hundred, if you see here.
You really have to do the calculations.
Yeah, so like six hundred and eighty-two dollars more per annual on the Signature Family Plan. Well, their wages may only be increasing four hundred and fifty.
Right. So
Why, why do you, you're doing two just because of the possibility of possible referendum?
Yes.
Because we have to submit to it.
And so we would have to approve it now, so that when we go to open enrollment with my staff, because they get two weeks at the beginning of May for open enrollment for health insurance and just general employee insurance changes, we have to be able to tell them, this is what we're paying now, maybe more later, maybe not, you know, depending on what you guys decide now.
Do you have to say option two is only if the referendum passes?
No, you, you could just say, or option two down the road, or whatever.
Maybe some of it's a mirror image, because I think when you, you pose it like this, it's almost like, well, it almost looks rather wishless to the people that are going to vote on it versus something that we actually, and I don't even, I don't even message it on the other one.
Yeah.
Right.
When you phrase it, I'm just talking about she's saying the messaging and you, like, how you're phrasing it. These are two options, because option two could totally work if there's some magical stuff with insurance.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, if we add a two percent insurance increase.
So option two isn't only if there's a referendum, it's a second option.
Right, and that's why it's said, or CPI, you need an all of these, maybe or CPI.
Either of these options, with or without a referendum, absolutely.
Right.
And, and
But you have to stay with the referendum, you said two options and then decide which one is that or a referendum.
Right, and
Yes.
And the language means for the referendum itself, that we're not gonna say, well, we're only gonna get increases if we get the referendum, we're gonna say we're gonna invest in our staff.
You're going to, he's signed contracts with people, they need to know what their wage increase is gonna be. And we can't just say, here's two things and we'll know in November, we're gonna give you a two percent or four percent.
The language reads, you cannot pay you less than. So, if you said budget one now, two point two-one percent, and you say, you know, but it says we will not pay you less than. And then, if the rest, then, like, we've done in the past, where we end up paying supplemental wages.
Did we do that last year?
Remember, we don't
We have supplemental that could signify.
No, no. Until
It's within the budget.
Well, June is the official budget presentation, I've adopted so we can continue to spend, but in October is the final, final, end of October.
The end of October.
So at that point, if we're going to a referendum, we need two exact budgets, because we have one for the budget, for the referendum getting passed, and one budget for the referendum not getting passed.
If we don't do a referendum, chances are not one.
That'll be decided in May, I guess, you know, in May's meeting, if we do a resolution or not, or if we decide in September, hey, you know what, maybe it's, we're not gonna do a referendum.
Welcome to the club.
That we're, we're gonna be where we're at, whichever you guys pick, I mean, you
I think by then it's July, because by September, there's a referendum, it's not, right?
Well, by September, we're gonna have to know.
Have to know, if we're gonna go.
And I'm just, Nate, I'm just being clear as a district administrator, you know, looking at the long-term future of this district, like, there, there will be, there will be cuts, not next year, but the following year, if we choose not to go to an operational referendum, there's, there's just, unless there's a drastic overhaul of the funding formula in the state of Wisconsin, there will, there will be cuts. We didn't replace some positions right now, like the literacy coach position. I feel there was value in that, and it was, it was having an impact. We, those people through attrition moved in other spots. It's not included in this budget, because we're trying to stay on the balanced budget. So when we say like, you know, it looks like, which, there are some, certainly some things we would like to include, but we're trying to stay fiscally responsible. One year out from that, we're, we're looking at
So did, every college that just passed a referendum and was passed to election in the last primary, there were a lot of them. Did they have two budgets going at the same time?
Not any, not any, so they wouldn't even In Ohio, we have to, we contacted, they contacted the API. So if we go to
Everybody going in November is gonna have two budgets.
We need to notify all municipalities that, hey, you're not going to have our final levy due until after the election.
So, is another, is another way to approach this, that we approve all budget we can afford. And if we go to referendum and that gives us abilities to give additional, to, to look additionally at enhancing our staff, there are a number of ways that we can do that, either in the future, it can be some type of a one-time something of different, like, I mean, I think there are some things that we could, I'm, I'm very nervous tying a hypothetical second budget to something that is included in the referendum. I, I don't know how we message that in a way that, I mean, I am all about part of the referendum being investing in having the best staff and the best, and, and showing the numbers of where we're at.
And we plan to find balance.
And we plan, like, I am, so I am all about all of that, I'm not sure if the best way I'm not sure if the best way is to like have this, well, if they, if they say, yes, you're gonna get this. I just feel like it will, I, I don't know, I really struggle with that.
Julie, I can do more than check it, but I'm, I am almost positive that every district who goes to ballot in November is, is adopting two budgets.
They have to, by law.
They have to.
Yeah.
So, so what Nate was talking about is the, the language of it. But every district who's going to the November ballot, if they went to April, they, it's one budget, cause they already know either the referendum passes or it doesn't. Those thirty-nine percent of the districts have just failed a referendum in April, their budget right now is getting put forward with, that's why you hear about all these cuts. Like there are districts cutting ten full-time teaching positions, cause they know now before the budgets do. If folks are waiting come November for that presidential election, you gotta build the budgets.
Got it.
And then, does that make sense?
Right, I mean, no, it doesn't make sense, but I do understand what you're saying.
Yeah, if, if, if someone, if someone.
So tonight, we say, here's our budget, you know, here's our budget, this is what we're gonna do. And then when I do my budget two calculations, I simply say X extra percent goes into employee compensation and benefits.
Sure.
Don't tie it to anything.
Sure.
So we can say, this is our budget, this is what we're passing out, plain and simple, this is, this is what we're doing. If we do eighty-five fifteen for all insurances across the board, whatever you pick, you know, whatever salary increase you pick, that's our budget, that's what we save us. My budget two is very generic, and all I simply need to state then is employee salaries, wages, and benefits increase of X percent. And then how that gets split out, you can decide, well, we wanna retroactively give raises, we wanna retroactively change insurance percentages.
Yeah.
At that point, you can decide that.
Cause, cause that's fund balance piece would be a part of the resolution question and not the budget.
After, like at the November normal meeting, you can decide that, cause we will know at that point if we are going to referendum, if it has passed. And then you can fine tune it, cause none of those effects are going to even happen till December.
Right, but when, when do you have to certify the levy?
November first, so we will certify two levies.
Oh, we can do that.
Yeah, we're, if you go to referendum.
Have to, we have to.
I mean, you, if you're going in November.
We will be certifying the two levies for two different budgets.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when I do the buzz, budget presentation in June, you're gonna get two presentations, you know, not two long presentations, but a snippet of the second one.
Right.
What is our additional percentage of increase? And they're gonna be very generic percentages yet, because I'm not gonna have time to spend all the projections that are gonna be needed. Until after, you know, May, if we decide to do a resolution, that only gives me a couple of weeks.
And we have been very transparent with staff, as Pam said, about the, where, where we're at right now, like what the landscape looks like.
Even the community is talking, yeah, talking about it before we.
Um, I, I got very positive feedback on that family communication about just kind of here's where we're at. I received communications saying thank you for like helping us understand kind of what this looks like. So I, it, this is sticky, this is, it's, it's unfortunate we're in a position like this, like districts aren't in a position like that, but the reality is this is.
So I just did some quick math, and if we approve the four point something.
One, two.
The four point one two percent, that's an extra hundred and forty-six thousand dollars from what, the two point?
No, no, it would be only an extra seventy-nine from the two point.
Something, yes. No, it's.
Pam, I thought we were talking.
But what are we, what are, the salaries and wages?
If you go from. Yes.
It's just an extra seventy-nine thousand and hundred dollars.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's it.
One.
And then the, if we go with the different health insurance. Um, if we, if we drop to the fif, eighty-five fifteen, it's forty-one six.
So we would approve half of that.
And then, right, and then if we cut something of the HSA, we have fifty-nine thousand in there. So we could give the full, again, it's still costing us more, right? Cause there's an increase, it's not like this isn't even, but instead of going only with one, which is only two percent increase. And keeping insurance the same, we could go with the four percent, four point one two or whatever percent. Um, switch the insurances to, um.
So you would be like, you'd share savings.
Which will, yeah, which will save forty-one thousand and seven thousand, which is forty-eight thousand of that. And we could offer half the HSA, and we would balance it out.
And then there's still some wiggle room with some other stuff yet at that point.
Well, right, and then don't touch the HSA if it doesn't come in at nine point five, like, I mean, like, right, so if it comes in at six, and you have a little bit more money, but in a sense.
Then we leave the HSA.
When you do touch the HSA, you are cutting into the salary.
For those that utilize it.
For you, those that utilize it, yeah.
Well, and it's not, we have salary, it's a benefit, it's not salary.
It's not, right.
But, but somebody has to still, they still have to pay for that then, it's a benefit, but if we take it away, they have to pay for it.
The same with the health insurance, they would say, you mean.
Yeah, right, right, cause right, and I've said that, cause I mean, I'm gonna repeat that endlessly, this is that we have to remember. Like, anything we take away in benefits, right, or increased insurance costs, it is impacting their money that they take home, like that's for reality.
Seventy-three percent of our permanent salary, not a hundred percent.
But the, the HSA used to be two thousand, and we took away five hundred.
Sure, the, but the issue is, we have this much money to spend.
Yeah.
Where's the best place to put it, where's, and again, if it's ideal, we can give it all, right?
That's the challenge.
We can't give it all. And if we want to give, where do we give? So if we're gonna give the four point two, or my other suggestion would be, we don't give four point two, we give three point something, or four point one two, we give three point something, which is the difference between. You take the forty-one and the eight, and you put it up there, and is it three point two instead of two point something? And we get, the more you get in wages, all of these things happen, their retirement's higher, their, their, their wages to be able to retire on.
And it's, it's locked in, it's locked in for future.
It's, it's a, it's a wage that keeps growing, I mean, all of those things, I, I would love to get to CPI. But I think we have to be responsible, if we get to CPI, that we have to find money somewhere in what else we're doing, so.
But I would highly, if you're asking for my recommendation, if we're gonna go from the, above the two. Is we do, do, the board would go to all the way to the four point one two, going partway there to me, just if you're gonna go. At least you can say you're going to the four point one two, and then look at the savings in those other areas through the insurance that, that you were discussing, Julie, yes.
Right.
And, and please know, once again, when we have the open enrollment period, if we have one or two staff members who choose to opt out. You could be looking at forty thousand dollars in savings right there.
Well, it's actually a, a strong possibility with Marshfield Clinic. Now, not just first, only people will lay people off, because we have a few spouses that are at the clinic. That could very well be in that layoff section, so then our people on our opt out may not be on our opt out.
It's a true show.
Pam, I look at this as maybe a naive, relatively new car smell superintendent, yeah. So here would be a scenario, I'll just roll through the board. So the board approves this four point one two CPI, looks at a, more of a, a staff contribution to the insurance. We get this scenario here in the open enrollment period where four, four people choose to opt out. And all of a sudden, we have this large chunk of money come in, and we've already determined we're gonna cut. We're going to make staff make hiring, I'm just, I wanna throw, say this, I'm saying this for my understanding.
Yeah.
The optics from the staff guns at that point is, and once again, we don't know this, we have to make some projections here. But I'm playing devil's advocate, so we come through, Pam, in that scenario, that all of a sudden, we do have more, that there's more money in that pool. That we thought we maybe didn't need or don't need to raise that contribution amount, is there anything that can be done at that point?
Well, right, I mean, even if we only get a six percent increase.
Well, I, I think.
Likely to have that as slim to none, but I mean.
I think if we only get a different percentage increase, you actually, you absolutely make those modifications. I'm not a fan of basing it on enrollment, because at any point, someone's spouse can lose their job at a Marshfield Clinic, and they automatically can come. Or a change in life event could happen, if someone gets married, and automatically they can re-enroll. I don't think insurance is something that can be that fluid, because then we would have to go back to employees and say, I'm really sorry, your coworkers just came on, and we're gonna have to charge you more. Cause there's still only this dollar, like you can't, you can't play both sides of that piece of it. But I completely agree that if you get the wonderful news, it's only gonna be six percent, you give all of it back.
Julie, I, believe me, I'm not a Pollyanna, I, I get it, the reality, but I also, part of, part of my job, you know, the reason the board hired me is too, is to retain and attract staff. And it's, and that's why I sound like I'm speaking out of both sides of my mouth, but it's balancing the fiscal responsibility, but also knowing, like, we have some pretty good staff here, we wanna keep them, and we wanna be able to attract staff. So it's finding that balance of it, and that's why I was asking that scenario, that the optics, and a lot of it is optics, is, is that appreciation from staff. That if all of a sudden you did see this happen, even if it changed later, i- the narrative is gonna be from staff, right, from the soul is, wait a minute. You made me pay in more for my benefits, and now we're running a surplus, dude, I'm, I'm playing total devil's advocate.
Sure.
But it's just something, uh, I'm not making a recommendation off of it, I, I would strongly support that getting to the CPI. If, if we had to look at raising some contributions and other raises, getting to the CPI for staff.
Well, the other thing too that we could do, I, I think, that, okay, if the referendum passes, or if we have a scenario where costs come in lower. We can always do that, what, what do we call it?
Supplemental.
Like supplemental, not a bonus, a supplemental.
Right.
So that could be another way to return savings to the employees.
We could let it go four years ago.
Um, we've had supplemental pays for quite a while, a lot of times they're, they're shown paid, so can you have back to that salary, just the salary weight from?
But as long as over added to days, staff would appreciate, would appreciate it, when they're not adding it into the base salary, it's.
It wasn't added.
It's like a stipend, it's a stipend, a long-term stipend.
Right, well, no, it's not a stipend, it, it has, I wasn't gonna be a stipend, so what I was thinking in my mind is, if we just did the two point two one step. Give us a step cost right now, but then down the road, if we get more money, whether it's, you know, we have a surplus of money coming in, or we get some, you know, wonderful news or something somewhere. Um, the additional one point nine one would be then pay the teachers and admin as supplemental pay, and on the hourly, so then we go right through active to July one, and look at their hours, and increase, you know, give them a bump up in pay. So, and then going forward, they would just have that rate of pay, yeah. So this is something that is done probably more years than what hasn't been done since I started here. And I think the first two years I was here, so fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, I think we paid eighty-five fifteen, I think employees, I know we paid fifteen percent for sure, my first year is not our second year. Um, and that was before we ever started an HSA qualifying plan, since HSA plan came a few years later.
So to Nate, to Nate's point earlier here, here would be my thought, and I understand that completely, that, that makes sense. It, to the concern brought up about not wanting that narrative out there that, hey, if you don't pass this, staff, the nice thing about going with the four point one two is you're not sending that narrative out there. It's, listen, we're committed to that percentage, whether that referendum passes or not, right? Like, so, right Nate, is that kind of what you were referring to earlier about the narrative of, well, wow, get past referendum, or this isn't happening?
Yeah, I mean, it is personal, but we put in the capacity to do more money.
Yeah.
It is gonna be more divisive than it usually needs to be.
Yes.
Yeah, and that, that would be my fear, is that.
I like, I like what Pam said, and it makes sense too, um, and Pam, pl- please help me, as far as two is that's. You know, as far as putting money into the fund balance, the fund compensation, that's not anything new, that, that was.
Well, we're, yeah, we, we started this, we're on year seven, going into year seven. So when we first started it, we were like building up our fund balance, so that we could fund it for five years. Well, then in between time, we had an increase of CPI, and there are small increase of like two and a half percent, and then we had a four point seven percent, and then we have a four percent. So those extra money kind of, I, I was actually kind of amazed we made it go as long as we did, because we were only projecting like between a two and a two point two seven or so. Increase every year, when we were bumping it up those big percents, I was really happy to see it lasted for more than five years.
And to clarify, that was the previous operational referendum where money was, was not.
No, that was just, we were just building up our fund balance, we had like a twenty-six or seven percent fund balance.
With the purpose of funding the compensation, the compensation.
Exactly, so we were purposely trying to keep money in fund balance, so that each year we would have enough to.
That was assigned to that compensation.
Okay, it is almost according to Tim, I think we've had some really, really good discussion.
Yes.
But I think we're to the point where we need to make some decisions. What I think I'm hearing is there is some consensus for using, for salaries to do the CPI.
Yeah, my recommendation would be the four point one two percent increase, changing all insurance to eighty-five fifteen, and changing HSA to five hundred and two fifty. And that would literally break even on the blue plan, but giving all of it in salaries and shifting, like, it literally, I mean, at least when I add it up. It gives us the blue, um, it gives us, taking a piece of both. So the first, um, what we would have, what we're spending more in salaries, we're saving on the benefits equally. Um, so that would be.
So we'd be taking a thousand out of a family HSA and moving it over to a four point one two.
Well, they're a thousand and five hundred right now, right? They would run five hundred and fifty.
No, they're, it's fifteen hundred.
They're five hundred, no, five hundred, say the one thousand family.
One thousand.
Yeah, so I just cut it in half, cause we needed half, we needed, actually, we're, it actually costs us two thousand dollars more annually to approve this. Than the, the, keeping salaries at the two point something percent and keeping, um, insurance is the same.
Okay, I, I'm going to suggest we have in our packet a series of motions, we, we need to do individual motions.
What was that?
It's, it's in, it's called suggested.
It's on the, hold it up there.
Yeah, it's called suggested motions, I believe, is that Chris?
Yes.
Yeah. It's suggested motions, after employee wage increases, suggested motions, okay? Um, I, I would suggest that we start with low hanging fruit, which would be the vision insurance and dental insurance. Now, what I think I've heard is that we by law have to do two budgets.
Yes, but for this, we could just.
With a bill of measure.
Right, so for this one, we can say, this is what we're passing right now, plain and simple. When I do my budget two calculations, I'll just say we're adding X percent into compensation and employee benefit cost. So we would not need to get nitty gritty for each component if you don't want to. Based on what I was hearing here, is that you didn't wanna try passing a referendum to increase cost, so we could just say, this is what it's gonna be for this year. If that changes, it's not gonna happen till December anyway.
Okay, yeah, do we have to have separate motions for vision and dental?
No, cause it's all on plan, so we have to put them together.
Um.
We don't have to, but it would make sense to.
The dental, it's one package, but they have separate premiums.
Right, right. But, okay.
You could certainly do that one as one, cause it all goes through both the dental.
Well, and there's not really, how much, okay, there's really no change in the dental and vision PSD cost.
The costs are so minimal, if you take it in the context for dental and vision, that it's really a thing.
Yeah. Yeah, so what we could do is, um, do a motion for vision insurance and dental insurance. Correct me if I'm wrong, vision insurance and dental insurance, this is what we're approving for both budgets.
Yes, we did say that, correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So it is low hanging fruit, is your statement?
Yeah, low hanging fruit, okay. So do I have a motion to approve the employee vision coverage? That the dental package of vision and dental insurance.
How can we? Add an eighty-five fifteen, or add the current ninety-ten? So that's the question to know, are we doing eighty-five fifteen, so that we save seven thousand dollars that we can then put into wages? Or are we keeping it at ninety-ten, which is, you know.
You know, this is such a small, the premiums are so small, I would, I mean, the difference between ninety percent, or fifteen percent and ten percent, I think is minuscule.
It is, it is too.
And so why don't we just stick with, keep it with the ninety-ten?
Well.
Isn't that what it is right now, is ninety-ten?
It is ninety-ten, I play devil's advocate. It is ninety-ten, to play devil's advocate, it, it, though, because of that same rationale that you just used, that would, by, by raising that contribution, it's gonna have a very minimal impact, that is gonna be seven thousand dollars that can go into, to the wages.
Right.
So I would play the other side of that to say, it's, it's seven thousand dollars spread out amongst those that take the vision and the dental, and, and as someone who takes both of those, it's a great deal, no matter how you look at it.
Yeah.
The vision and the dental are phenomenal deal.
Yes.
At eighty-five percent or ninety percent, they're a great deal, and I'm, that's saying that as someone who takes both.
So, I, I, I would, I would, okay, I, can I, can I make a motion, Pam?
Yes.
Okay, I move that we, um, accept the delta dental package for vision and dental insurance, um, keeping the districts, keeping the, the cost share at ninety percent with the district, and ten percent for employees. That's what it currently is, correct?
That is the current.
That's the current, but if we went to eighty-five.
Are we going to move health insurance to eighty-five? Because if we are.
If you want four point one two, we have to.
If, if, if we're gonna do that, why don't we do that also for dental and vision, keep it the same? And then we can take that seven thousand, six thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Stick it, stick it into the compensation.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Four point two.
Let's do that.
Um, so I'll make the motion that our vision and dental for twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five is an eighty-five fifteen split, Gavin.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the delta dental package for vision and dental with, um, eighty-five fifteen split between employer and employee. So if any other discussions that are all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Okay, one down.
I'll make a motion to approve the health insurance eighty-five fifteen.
Is there a second?
So it's scenario two.
Scenario two.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Okay, on favor of the health plan split, move the scenario two.
What are we gonna do with the HSA, are we going to?
It's the next, we're not voting as I guess.
Oh, no, okay.
So, let's stick to one thing, okay? So, is there any other questions about the health insurance? Then, let's vote, um, in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. HSA savings accounts.
So Julie, did your projections on the HSA include, when you were doing the numbers, the six thousand dollars in savings with the dent, the, the, that's all vision?
Seventy-two, eighty-three, actually. Yeah, so if you take the seventy-two, eighty-three, and the forty-one, six, twenty-six, and you subtract it from the seventy-nine, nine, twenty-six up above, you have about thirty-one thousand, which is just over half of the fifty-nine thousand we currently spent, so splitting it in half would keep it even to kind of that, um, you know, again, the same thing, we could go with the minimal wage increase and keep insurances all the same, or we can go with the additional wage increase, and make the adjustments to the wages. And again, I would highly recommend that if anything changes in our renewal that gives you more money, you put it right back there, like.
Agreed.
So, um, all we're simply doing is.
That was why I asked that question before, if we have savings that goes back into the split.
Right, right, well, well, I don't know of savings because someone can take the plan, but savings because it's not a nine.
I would say.
Right, point five percent, right, a lower percent.
Correct, um, so I, I mean, and, you know, maybe we do seven fifty, like, maybe we eat a little bit of it, and not go all the way to five hundred, two fifty, but five hundred, two fifty would almost be the wash of what we're spending additionally wages from not going all with the minimal plan, um, would need to come off benefits.
I, I would, I would support the idea of, as you said, maybe not having the HSA component, and looking at a, a split, and as you said, you would, that would be a, what, Pam, do we have that number, cost delta, that if it were to be seven fifty, and what would it be?
Well, I did not, you know, I did, yeah, all.
So you're saying, Julie, instead of going from the thousand family down to five hundred family, and for the five hundred, say it to two fifty?
So it'd be seventy-five percent.
It'd be seventy-five percent.
Right, so it's forty-four, two fifty, instead of, um, so.
How much of a cost savings is that?
That was the question I was wondering.
Yeah, yeah, so twelve hun, twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, right?
If we have to, correct?
Yeah, it'd be fourteen, seven fifty, that you would save on that, plus forty-one, six, two six, plus seventy-two, eighty-three, is sixty-three, six, fifty-nine of the seventy-nine, nine, twenty-six. So we could take what their current of a thousand and five hundred, and just look at seventy-five percent of it.
Of each of those.
Right, versus dropping it to fifty percent.
Yes.
Which means we're taking on a little bit more, but we're close.
Yes. I li, I like that.
Okay, that sounds like a good compromise.
So it'd be three, seventy-five, and seven fifty. I would make a motion that the HSA savings account for twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five is seven fifty-three, seventy-five, with flexibility if our insurance premiums come in lower than nine point five percent.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we go with a three seventy-five, seven fifty split for HSA savings accounts for twenty-four, twenty-five. On favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Employee wage increases, um, I think we have consensus around CPI.
How many questions for the four point one two percent increase?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on this?
That's in the budget two.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Stay with, but still, budget one would be, when I'm jumping right to budget two with all the.
This is all, just, just the.
It would be budget one, mine would just theoretically base.
That's nice, yeah, so the, the percent wage increase, Chris, will be the, right to the four point one, but, but the savings was made up with what was just approved through the insurance.
We're going with the orange wage, which is the one seventy-two, three ninety-one, instead of ninety-two, but then we're going with some of the blue, um, and, and, and modified blue, um, benefits to make up for it.
Yeah, we combined, we've been.
Yeah.
We've been very creative.
With the flexibility, down the road, if a referendum passes, to be able to.
That's great, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yes, okay.
If insurance costs come in different, we can.
Yes, correct.
Oh, one hundred percent, if you get the beautiful, only six percent, you take all of that and put it in, back, give the HSAs back to where they used to be, and quite honestly, make some adjustments on the percentages of, like, I mean, so if it comes in less than what we expect, I highly don't.
I highly don't.
Well, we had a.
Now if we had a twenty percent.
Looking at the new situation, it's probably not like that, but it's still, that's the problem.
Yeah, that's pretty nasty, so, okay, any other questions, comments?
Guys, you're in your pool, you're cool?
I'm cool, okay, you're kind of cool, anyway, um, okay.
I'm gonna make a motion right now.
So, it has, um, Julie made a motion, I believe, Rick seconded it, so, um, if there's no other discussion, let's vote, um, the motion to, um, budget a wage increase of the CPI of four point one two percent, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Wow.
Support stuff.
It is, it's very important stuff, and we have more important stuff, so.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, thank you, um, we realize that there's, like you said, a lot of moving parts.
Yes.
Um, thank you for your work with all these moving parts.
You're welcome. Appreciate it.
Thank you for thinking outside the box.
Pam, if you would like to.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, that was right, yeah.
Okay, um, we are at number twelve, which is the legislative update, you know, this time of the year, uh, you know, the legislature has adjourned for the year until, till next January, and so it's, all the bills that passed are either being signed or vetoed, so, versus me going through everything individually, I just asked Deb to include, um, links to some of the key legislative updates, um, these updates go through bills that the governor has signed, so that means that, you know, we're gonna be dealing with them, and I just closed my thing, sorry. Um, and then there's another one where he signed, I did include one that he vetoed, which was the one related to, um, tr, there it is, bill to regulate the participation of transgender athletes in school sports, he did veto that. Um, but all the other ones, and FYI, he did sign the bill that increases, or restores funding for the office of school safety. So that was a major, major win. But it looks like if there's going to be any policy, if there's going to be any state policy, um, related to the transgender students in sports, it's not gonna occur until after January of twenty-two, twenty-five. So, that's the legislative report. Okay, public comments, doesn't look like we have any money unless you want to talk, yeah.
I'm good.
Okay, uh, future agenda items?
So the, I will update, and Nate, I know, I believe you had sent an email to Pam, we'd like, with the marathon work Pam put into the budget, that fund eighty presentation that was asked, I, I told Pam, certainly, that can be on the back burner till we get this worked out, so I would anticipate May for that fund eighty presentation, okay, so.
Mary Ann?
Mm-hmm.
I had talked to Jason about maybe having a tour for us before a board meeting, um, seeing what is across the knee, uh, old egg shot, what that looks like, seeing the high school.
Just take like campus tour one month.
Yeah, some of us haven't seen different places than this for years.
For a while, yeah.
And, and if the board would like to come in at six o'clock on an evening, and do that, that would be more than happy to.
Well, and.
Go a walking tour.
When do we do that, we are moving?
Next month.
That's, that's next month, okay, when we can talk about the timing.
Times for the board meeting?
Time, times of the board meeting and all of that, yeah.
Did you get that one?
We, you know, we could, we could start in May at six P M. and do that walkthrough. Or six thirty, or something like that.
I'm saying six, six P M. probably.
Six.
It would take a while to cover all these grounds.
Okay. So for May, we'll do a walkthrough?
I think that would be very helpful, especially with facilities and strategic planning process, and after the board to have a view of some of them.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Anything else I talked, I've said, maybe, you know, or Mary Ann, if you have any other ideas for things, and I, I think actually the administrative team is doing some of those presentations.
Good.
Like, and I know the board's found them informational, so.
Good, good to hear, okay, um, next, we will consider moving into closed session per Wisconsin statute nineteen dot eight-five, print one, print C, for the purpose of administrative contracts, evaluation, and performance, uh, Julie, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Motion?
Roll call vote.
Did you say yes?
I said yes.
Tired.
Chris?
Yes.
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 Julie?
Yes, we're in closed session.
Who made the motion?
Yes, I was asking, nothing.
Oh, do we need a motion?
To go into closed session, yeah, Julie, did you make the motion?
I made the motion.
She made a motion.
Okay.
She said it very quietly.
Retroactively, and make something. Yeah, sorry, I'm just, I'm still.
No bathroom, right, and I will keep this race succinct.